We'll call the committee, the whole meeting to order for Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. First item on the agenda is roll call. Don't have anybody here to do it. Miller?
Here.
Toto?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knop?
Here.
Chansit?
Absent.
Silvadi?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Is that Chansit?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Lay?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Saron?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Okay, we have thirteen of the fourteen Alderman press. Next up is a reminder to please speak into the microphone for BATV. Number three would be approve the minutes for October 15th, 2019. So move, have any? Have a motion?
So moved.
Second? No, I have a motion. Then a second. Okay. O'Brien and Silvadi, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is approved. Next up would be items to remove, add or change. Do we have anything tonight? Nothing. Okay. Matters from the public. No one. Okay. We will move right on to number six then. Resolution nineteen dash one sixteen dash R. Approving Task Order Number Two with Siemens for an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars to perform equipment testing at the McKee Street substation. Alderman O'Brien.
This is just routine equipment testing at the McKee Substation. We do it every five years. As it says in the memo, it's routine, but it is highly specialized. So staff reached out to Siemens to do it. Going to have it done before December. And I guess they're the only ones we reached out to, is that?
Yeah, they're also one of the very few that does it in Chicago. So I mean, it's not something that you can just solicit bids and get ten people to reply to.
And so after December, they'll give us a report back on whatever potential failures there could be and any kind of shortcomings in the system at McKee.
Exactly.
Anybody have any questions? Anything, Gary?
It's one of the reasons we did the master services agreement with Siemens is because we have limited vendors and they will test and they will identify any issues. If there are any issues, that cost is obviously not included in here. We'd have to do repairs separately, but this is just for testing.
Right. I mean, it's a safety factor also.
Well, you have a million dollar substation out there. You, it's kind of like changing the oil in your car. If you don't ever do it, your car will eventually blow up.
Mm-hmm.
If you don't ever test and you don't check to make sure that everything is in working order, you know, you're just asking for it. So this is that preventative maintenance.
Anybody have anything they want to add, questions or concerns?
I would also say I think this probably provides more reliability because if we can identify problems before something bad occurs, it's a good idea to do this now. Find the problems, plan to replace stuff that needs to be replaced and catch it before it breaks down.
So one of the items that's not in this proposal is thermal scanning, and that's because our insurance company provides that service or the insurance company will go out and do exactly that, Alderman. They'll come in with a thermal scan and say, look at all the equipment, and if something is hot that's not supposed to be hot, that's a telltale sign that something's wrong.
When do they do that?
That's going to be done in conjunction with this separately, but in conjunction with this so that it can all go into one comprehensive report.
So do we pay the insurance company for that or do they do that?
Part of our fees. Yeah. All part of our fees.
Part of our coverage. Good.
Because it's in their interest also to make sure that.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Mark?
No, I mean, this is just good stuff because we talk about maintaining our infrastructure and, you know, knowing that we're staying on top of this stuff and prevent long-term higher costs is a really good thing to do, so.
Excellent. Anybody else? Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Move by, by, oh, excuse me. I'm having an age. Can I get that again? By Elliot Metzler?
Second by who?
Mark Ueher. Sorry, Elliot.
No worries.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. We can do consent, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Next up would be our discussion, continued discussion on the 2020 budget. Would like to start that.
So at the end of the last meeting, there were several alternatives proposed as ways to address the increase that needs to be made to the budget as, you know, the property tax and what level adjustment to make to the property tax and then also whether or not reserves should be used, fund the additional needed for the expenditures that are identified in this budget and then also whether the City Hall remodeling project would be approved and what funds would be used in order to fund that project. And so Peggy has put together some additional information tonight that presents several alternatives as to how to do that.
Okay, so last week I sent this out to you, giving you an estimate of the changes that would impact the budget if we did not levy the full amount that we have for property tax revenue in the budget. And the first scenario, well, either of these scenarios include not having to print a black box notice in the newspaper and no public hearing for the property tax levy. So the first one reduces the spending in the budget by one hundred and forty thousand and that rate would make the property tax rate between seventy-four and seventy-five cents and that would represent a twelve dollar increase to the owner of a three hundred thousand dollar home. And then if we reduced it down to what the property tax cap would be, would be around two hundred and fifty thousand and because we had five hundred thousand budgeted, that would be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar decrease and that would make the rate essentially the same as it was this year, maybe a dollar eighty-one more per year for the owner of a three hundred thousand dollar home, depending on what the final EAV is. And so reducing the revenue, we had a deficit in the original budget that was presented of four hundred and eighty-three thousand. That included capital spending of five hundred and seventy-four thousand, so we had a little bit of room there for the operational deficit. So cutting the revenues by one hundred and forty thousand would create an operational deficit of fifty thousand and cutting revenues by two hundred and fifty thousand would create a one hundred and sixty thousand operational deficit. So scenario A, we would need, if we didn't want to use reserves, we would need to make fifty thousand dollars in cuts. These are just some of the items that I came up with tonight. We could eliminate new equipment by thirty thousand. We have sixty thousand in the budget right now across the various general fund departments. And again, we're only talking about the general fund here, not the utilities. In that line item are small stool, are tools, jack stands, the bike sharing station and fire hose. It wouldn't be eliminating all of the fire hose because they have to have fire hose. It would just be cutting some of it. But it would probably be, you know, a good chunk of their budget and it would eliminate funding of the bike sharing station. We could limit the downtown snow removal contract to fifty thousand instead of seventy It might mean that we didn't, don't respond to every single snow event. Now again, it might not end up being, because it's a not-to-exceed contract, it might not reach seventy thousand, but we could reduce that. And then scenario B where we would need to have additional cuts. It would include those above. And then in addition, we could eliminate or delay, not eliminate, but delay for future budget year document management and the HRIS system. Those are both of almost fifty thousand, it's almost seventy-five thousand there. Reduce the salt supply, meaning we would have a lesser salt supply on hand by about twenty thousand. Office supplies just going through and picking out from each department, eight thousand. And then we could cut back on training a little bit in each department to come up with the balance that we would need for cuts there. So before we move on, I don't know if you have any questions on that part of the budget. My takeaway was that you wanted to reduce the tax, the property tax levy. I wasn't sure if it was by a hundred and forty or two hundred and fifty thousand, so I provided both to you. Your options would be to use reserves. But I should point out, I didn't put it on the slide, but I have it here. By cutting the revenue, one hundred and forty thousand will have a deficit of six hundred and twenty-three thousand, almost six hundred and twenty-four thousand. So we would be spending down reserves by that amount. And if we cut it two hundred and fifty thousand, we would be passing a budget with a deficit of seven hundred and thirty-four thousand.
I think it's also important to point out that unfunded in any of what we're talking about here were the additional needed positions for a finance and budget analyst in the finance department, the additional hours for the administrative assistant in the human resources department and also the pool of part-time records technicians for the police records
I do have a slide on that one. When we met last week, I did not have some information that I was waiting on because Byron was ill that day and I've talked to Gary since then and we are recommending that we adjust the wastewater treatment budget by twenty thousand so that the administrative assistant position is full-time. Based on the information provided, there is a lot of additional equipment that the administrative assistant will be logging the maintenance of and the additional hours are needed. So we are making that recommendation that we change the wastewater budget. But for the general fund positions, we have not included funding for the police records We would possibly see a decrease in overtime there and would like to maybe entertain the idea of shifting some of the overtime budget to the part-time budget next year after the police chief has had a chance to look over that information. However, the expected decrease in overtime could be offset if there are a lot more outside events that the police need to work overtime for. It's hard to project right now what that would be, but those are events that we don't bill out for, such as Main Street and those functions. And then the increase to HR, it's a nine thousand dollars in wages and taxes, but there is the potential that there would also be an increase of twenty thousand, excuse me, for, because that increases it to full-time status. Thirty hours is the full-time status for health insurance eligibility. That doesn't mean the employee in that position would take it, but once you raise the position to that hours and if you replace that person with someone else, you have that potential there. And then the finance analyst, a salary and insurance adds potentially a hundred thousand almost in wages and benefits. So those are needed items, but items we haven't included and in light of the funding we have here, we can't really recommend that you include it.
And I would note that we do not recommend adding positions lightly. We realize that the impact that that has, given that salary, benefits and the pension are about seventy-five percent of the city's general fund budget. However, I think it's important to note that since the economic downturn, the city's workforce is still down twenty-three employees from that time.
Are there any questions on what I've presented so far?
So none of those positions are in the current budget.
That's correct, but we are making the recommendation, it's not in the budget as presented, but that is the impact and we would like to add that in.
Of all.
That was really just really a timing issue, unfortunately.
So that's just the top one, the one.
Just the top one.
Just for wastewater.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else have any questions this part? Because I think to me, this is one of those things where we look at this and we want to keep the tax rate as low as we can. We want to use reserves when we need to use them, but we also have to look at that picture that that's what's going to be needed to keep operations running the way we want them to run or the way we would like them to be run. So it's going to take more revenue to be able to do that. So we can't keep saying we have to keep the tax rate low if we want to have that happen because reserves don't cover that. Reserves should not pay for our operations. So we have to raise more revenue if we want to add those positions. And that's, you know, I don't want to raise taxes. I don't want to go beyond really the cap that's out there, but the reality is if we want to provide the services and we want the staff to be able to accomplish the things we want them to do, we have to be able to do this. And unfortunately, that's the harsh reality of it.
We do have good reserves this year, but it's important to know that if you are passing a budget that has a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit, you can't continue to do
I mean, I guess the thought that comes to my mind is we've got, I would say there's about forty new houses out in Tanglewood Five that are just being occupied and built and sold. So that's going to be one increase in property tax. And we've got two hundred and forty-two out there in Wind Energy and Kirk Road. I don't know how quickly all those will be built, but there's probably what, thirty, forty out there now. And then we've got, you know, a lot of tremendous amount of remodeling and things happening in both the residential and retail areas of the community. So I mean, our EAV is, has got to be going up, I mean, by a significant amount of money. I guess I talked to Laura earlier today, I would favor the idea that we, you know, try to cover it with some reserves, but count on this EAV coming up so that that will absorb, create some more money that will help us absorb some of these costs that we're talking about. What it meant in what like?
Mark?
Yeah, I agree with that there. I was also wondering, I know we had talked about it last time, trying to give, you know, some kind of swag on if we had an idea where we're going to hit with the census and then what that would mean to us moving forward. So I don't know if we looked, tried to figure that out or not.
I don't know if you, did you look at that, Scott?
I did previously, I don't recall the exact numbers, but it was, I thought it was like around a hundred and fifty dollars per head for each additional person that was annexed or moved into new homes and everything else before April 1st. So that's kind of our cutoff date because then that creates the whole situation with all the state revenues and everything. It's like, I can't remember the exact number, but I thought it was around a hundred.
Right. It is around a hundred and fifty dollars. About twenty-eight of that is motor fuel tax, which is separated and has to be spent only on the roads. But for the general fund, it's around a hundred and twenty-eight, a hundred and thirty per person, but I don't know if there was a estimate of new population.
Uh, no, we did not have any specific estimates on those numbers.
Well, we're being, receiving revenues right now based on twenty-six oh forty-five or oh fifty-four. Could have it transposed in my head. But I would estimate that we would hopefully get what, five hundred at least?
In new EAV?
In new population.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure that's very likely.
I think one thing you have to consider is we've got that, how many units are in that windmill manor out there behind Walmart now? Is it ninety?
Uh, there's like eighty units in that.
Eighty units. Then across the street, there's a hundred and forty units.
Right.
So that's two hundred and twenty, give or take a little in that. So that, all those should be occupied. Many of those will be one person, but there'll be some couples going in there. And then the homestead tells me they've had a, I mean, they've got some good publicity, believe it or not, off of this, this legionaire thing because they handled it so well. I've talked to people that have been down here to see me and say, we're moving in there because we like the way these people operate. So they've got suddenly a crush of new applicants, so I'm told, of people wanting to get in there. And so I, I guess I would be optimistic that the five hundred could be on the lower side, but I don't want.
Yeah, I was just pulling that number out. I really don't know.
And we got these forty units sitting out there now in Unit Five at Tanglewood that there's a few of those are occupied, but a lot of them are still being worked on construction. So, and then we got the ones over on Wind Energy. And then the other thing that it's hard to get a handle on it that's happening is, is that we have this, this thing you want to get yourself into the Batavia schools, I think is a real deal. And we have a lot of people buying, those of us who are from the older neighborhoods. There's a big turnover in housing in the older neighborhoods very rapidly in some respects where younger couples are buying it. First thing we do is we tear out the kitchen and the bathroom and build bigger, take out closets or pantries or whatever have you. And then they're moving in and many times they're coming out of Chicago or someplace and they may already have a couple of extra family members to put on the rosters. So, you know, I'm thinking of places like, you know, North Jefferson and North Prairie Street, South Prairie Street. I, I know of people that have moved into those where, you know, the house was an elderly woman living there by herself after her family had died and now suddenly there's all these, she's gone and we're moving five people into a house that previously had one. So it's not, and we're not seeing we have anything sitting here empty. I go to, in Chicago and I hear other mayors tell all kinds of war stories about how they got blocks full of unoccupied houses with squatters in there and they don't know who's in there and who isn't and who shouldn't legally be there and all this other good stuff. So I'm, I would be optimistic from a budget perspective that we, we do have the promise of more revenue in the next couple of years here coming at it, beyond the 2020 census.
Based on that, and I agree with all of that, a lot of optimism. I agree with you in, 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 most years, you don't want to use reserves to use operating expenses, but I think until we get a grasp on the optimistic side, it makes sense to lean more on that this year than on taxes. And I don't mind doing some of it, you know, up until the black box, but I wouldn't have a problem with going into some of the reserves until we get some of these numbers through and know what we're really dealing with or working arrears next year.
Peggy, can you bring back up the other?
Yes.
The first one, so it shows the differences of what dollars were to start with there, Because I guess I lean more towards scenario A to get us through there and whatever we have to make up in that, we do out of reserves. That's, that's my feeling. Elliot?
Just looking at the, the figures that we're talking about, sales tax being our primary, you know, source of revenue into the city and seeing that it's gone down the last couple of years and you made note as well that, you know, online sales have been chipping away at the in-store sales. Do we have any room with Home Rule or other to look at how much that use tax is to increase that? Since we're losing in-store revenue, in Batavia revenue to online sales. I know you said that there was a seventy thousand increase, which is great, but, you know, maybe before we go to the property tax side, if that's something that's worth exploring.
You mean increase the use tax?
For the internet, in particular, right.
It's part of the local government distributive fund. And so it's a, based on a formula, we, it's not a rate that we have.
We don't have any way of leveraging that in any way with.
Home Rule does not apply.
What's it?
Home Rule does not apply to that.
And that's set by the state. It's just what we get back from the state through the LGTF, but nothing by way of.
Right, no, in fact.
In any way, shape or form that we could.
There has been discussion on how they would collect the Home Rule sales tax on online sales. As far as I know, it's not really moving forward because it would be very, very difficult for the seller to determine if someone is within the municipal borders because if you live in the city, you could, I live just outside the city, but my mailing address is Batavia. So it would take a sophisticated database of a seller in order to know if they're in the city or out of the city.
I'm just going to argue that from a technical perspective, given that they can geopoint MAC addresses, but that's not for here, so.
Right, they can do it, but if I'm selling something on eBay and I'm the seller, how they can determine where that gets purchased at, I don't think that's there.
There's ways, we're just not doing it.
There, I think there's been discussion for the large sellers.
There's ways, they're just not doing it.
We had talked last week, I'll just bring it up again, there is the possibility, if not with this budget, with a future budget, of increasing our Home Rule sales tax for purchases made within Batavia, but not the online sales.
I think if, if I remember correctly, you said like a quarter percent was like a nine hundred thousand dollar bump.
Yeah, I just, I guess that, that's the one that scares me with, we're trying to preserve what we do have on Randall Road and other retail sales things. If we change that rate, that may really affect that more than we think.
Well, we've got a good groove going on with businesses opening downtown. That's, you don't want to.
Leave that, leave that one alone right now.
I take that same view though with where we are with property taxes. Same line of thinking is we've relied on property taxes to increase, that the concern for the pressure on homeowners is now, it could be moving towards the tipping point. I will speak for myself as, you know, we all pay the same taxes and collectively living in this town, for me, it is personally getting very hard.
Mm-hmm.
Very hard. And, and I make good money, so I will stand up for those people that we're hearing that we're starting to price people out of town. That I know is happening because I know how much pressure it is on mine and how much that I will start to cut back on that money that is getting spent into town. As we know, I spend a lot of money going to different things and if that starts pulling away from spending at local businesses, that's going to have a ripple effect because the, and I know that it's a dollar here or twelve dollars here for this year, but we have to remember that twelve dollars this year and twelve dollars last year and twelve dollars the year before that starts adding up. And that's the, I was talking with Citizen Stark about that, that she, she would view each year as, well, that's the budget for this year and that's, and I'm like, you, you have to have some historical reference though, because what did you pass last year that added to it?
Right.
That keeps adding up. And that's the part where you get to the breaking point that we've seen throughout the state where people are just like, I can't do it anymore. We don't want to mess up, going back to what you're saying with, we don't want to raise the, the sales tax to the point where there, people stop shopping here. We also don't want to do that to what the mayor's point is, to have people stop moving here. Because if we give people the disincentive to move here, that's going to affect our EAV and then we start, then we start getting into the problem areas. We don't have that currently, so everything that we've been doing by having the low tax rate, yes, I understand, we, we could be doing more, but. yes, I understand, we, we could be doing more, but we could also be XYZ municipalities that the mayor talks to, what are you doing there? Well, what we're doing there is what they didn't do, which was make sure you hold the line, hold the line in light of what's going on. You make yourself the more attractive community to go to.
Well, and I guess what my point was at the beginning of it was, if that's what we have to do or that's what we want to do, then we have to look at what we're trying to tell staff we want them to accomplish because they both can't happen.
Yep.
We can't add staff, we can't expect more things to happen here if we're going to keep the rate as low as it is and not increase our revenue. If we don't increase our revenue, we can't add more staff, we can't expect more things to happen, we can't expect processes to be faster if we're not going to add staff to be able to do that. And to do that, we have to raise revenue.
I would agree with that, but I, I, I would, to a degree, I guess, second, you know, what I'm hearing here is, because I, I do think at least in our state right now, it's, it's a bit of survival. You know, it's, we want to be as responsible as we can, but we need to be the best looking by comparison if we expect to continue to see our base grow.
And we can never forget that we are not the only taxing body. It's not about us having the lowest rate because we're the municipality with the lowest rate. It's the overall rate, including our school district, park district and library.
But we all have to do our part.
Right, we, we do have to be part of that, but there's so much of it that we can't control. If we go up twelve dollars a year, but the school district goes up three hundred dollars a year on a three hundred thousand dollar house, the only thing that people see is that their bill went up three hundred and twelve dollars.
I, I don't dispute that, but at least I can argue that.
Yeah.
And that's where it goes back to, if we all just say, throw our hands up and go, our part, we're going to have to raise our part because we do, it gets stacked on. And the, then the, then as a resident, you see a collective governmental wall of they're not going to change. And they're just going to raise it. And that will become talking points for others that will gain traction. And that gains traction because other people start to feel that. Just, they see it when they're writing the checks. And that becomes the reality of the situation. And I know that's my reality of the situation where I'm making cuts to those areas of a lot of things that I would like to be spending money on other things. But I know that the school district is going to take the largest part of that. I know it. But also we have to, have to be able to call that out too and go, look, we're cutting as much as we can, you know, and we're holding the line on that. But if people are moving here for the school district, people are also going to move away because of the school district if it becomes too high. That's a double edged sword.
You know, I would just make note that you go in where I go in Chicago and they have all the municipal tax rates listed up there. Ours is one of the lowest in the region. The only ones that are, seem to be lower than us are cities that have separate fire protection districts. And then if you go and look at the fire protection district, most of them, their tax rate's higher than what ours is for the fire, police and everything we're, we're showing here. So, you know, somebody wants to complain to us about our taxes and I get it. Uh, but, I mean, our rate is really, really, very, very low in comparison to our immediate neighbors. I mean, I get some people down there on Wagner Road that back up to another town just south of us. And I'm told they get their tax bills out and one looks at it and says, gee, mine's seventy four cents. And the other one says, well, my city rate is two dollars and sixteen.
Yeah, I, I would add to that, that our rate right now is virtually the same as it was six years ago. Of course, the EAV was a lot lower than, that was the low point there to come back. But, but, uh, I, I would agree with it, that, uh, looking at scenario A, um, we'd, we'd maintain a, a tax rate that's fairly close to it and it would be one of the lowest around. Um, I think we've, we've, we've got a lot coming. One thing that hasn't been mentioned is what's happening out at Fermi. Um, and I went out there a couple of weeks ago for the event they had and there's a lot that, as the director said, the, uh, it was in the seventies that, uh, the lab was built and they kind of ran the course of the first project. And then it was, well, what's next? He said, what we have right now is, uh, three decades into the future that we know we're going to be viable at this lab. So it really gave a lot of hope. So I, I don't think we should, I think we should take that into consideration too as we look at the, the growth in residents, uh, what we're doing downtown. There is promise, but, um, burden of hand is also, you know.
I, I would say, I think we need to be careful about pegging our future on unknowns. I mean, that's, I mean, I, things, there's some stuff coming and that's wonderful, but, you know, one tweet and we could be into, you know, into a recession. So, you know, so that, we just got to be careful about that. That's, I mean, things, things are good, but I think we have to be fiscally conservative and just be careful.
We've also, for the last two years, have kept saying that we expect One North Washington to keep breaking ground in the next spring. So.
Right.
I'm not discounting that it's coming, but that's two years in a row now.
And, and realize, One North Washington is not going to hit our budget with any large tax increases or anything. That has almost zero effect on what we are doing. It's going to affect the local businesses downtown and throughout the area. That's really what it's going to affect because of the way the TIF is set up and the way the deal is set up. That's really not going to affect us in any of the time that any of us are going to be on the city council.
Agreed. Just speaking to the notion of being able to predict what's coming.
Right, right. And, and I think that's one of the things that I feel kind of somewhat responsible for is we have to think about what we're going to saddle the next city council or this council after that, or the council, again, further down the road with, that if we back off and don't keep revenues increasing to the point where they provide for the services that we know our public demands or we want to provide for the public, there's going to be a time when there's going to be a city council down here that's going to start talking about double digit increases in the taxes, be able to do what they're already doing. If we don't slowly incrementally creep up there with the staff that we have and the, the cost that we incur on a constant basis.
Can I, um, ask a question that I had jotted in my notes from last year when I was sitting out in the audience? Um, I, I, when we, when we add neighborhoods, like the, the one out on Kirk Road and other single family, um, communities, it raises our EAV, but it's actually a net loss in terms of taxes because the infrastructure that goes into it is not covered by the revenue generated by the community. Is that correct? Did I make that note correct?
The, the way it works is our EAV increases and because we are a home rule community, we decide how much we want to levy and that is the amount we collect. And then the rate is determined by taking the amount we levy and dividing that into the EAV. So when we talk about capturing the new growth, if we don't increase the tax levy, we won't capture that new growth. Is that what you were asking or?
I think also, um, in addition to that, to that point, we now have more roads and we have more infrastructure and we have more residents with a demand for services from our police and our fire departments and all of the, the rest of the services that the city provides. So Scott, did you have something you wanted to?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, when you look at the value of, of developments and the efficiencies of the infrastructure, it also depends on what it is. So.
Right.
In the case of like, um, Prairie Commons, that's a relatively high density of residences per mile of road or mile of water main. So that, that helps pay for itself more. The other one is if you have really expensive housing. Um, really expensive housing pays its own way and usually it's like for five or six hundred thousand dollars. It pays its own way in the amount of infrastructure, even if you have more infrastructure, value of the homes paid. So that's, that's kind of some of the balances.
I realize now you were talking about replacing the roads and it would be wonderful if we, every year we're setting aside money to replace those roads, uh, in twenty years. In reality, that just can't happen with the way the budget is. And that's what we're seeing now with the increased cost for resurfacing because there was so much development in, in the eighties and nineties and, and all of those roads are needing resurfacing now.
If I could jump in, just because we receive a dollar in new tax revenue from new development, doesn't mean we receive a dollar. Because that dollar then is spent, as Laura said, in the form of building inspectors and leaf collection and snow plowing and now brush collection and police and fire. And that dollar pretty soon shrinks down to just a minor amount if, if, if it's positive at all, when you consider overall. towns like Naperville were able to do it on growth because they did it on growth for thirty some odd years. And they finally got themselves to the point where they had, you know, Route Fifty Nine corridor and I don't even know how many auto dealerships they have and how many hotels they have. They were able to do it because they grew to such a size that they, they became self-sustaining. Those of us who are really kind of grown out, development's not going to really move the needle.
An auto dealership would.
Great.
Few hotels.
But that population growth also adds to other taxes though.
Right, we would get the, the per capita taxes through the.
People in town, they're going to.
LGDF.
More customers.
And spending, you know, people don't like to go way out of their way for basic necessities. So that would hopefully increase the sales tax in our area. But we also have to keep in mind that those online sales are going to continue to eat away. Um, I don't know if any of you noticed, but I got an Amazon toy catalog in the mail. And that makes it very convenient for people. And unfortunately, that will probably continue to eat away at our sales tax.
I, I think though, to the mayor's point, you know, we, we have these developments that are coming and they'll be bringing in albeit, you know, small amounts of revenue. When Wash, One Washington Place is built, it's going to bring a lot of people to our downtown immediately. And I think that immediate response is then going to generate more shops, like the dress shop on River Street on the corner of River and Kirk and, and more restaurants. And we, we can see now, just I think with the promise of Washington Place, that, you know, there are more higher, higher end restaurants coming to our town. And, and, and possibly, hopefully more successful. So I, I, with that being said, I, I think then we need to maintain a, a level of service also and, and, and a level of, uh, infrastructure maintenance that costs money. And the money will come on that promise. But I think, you know, it takes an investment also by the, the, the city council, however it is, if, if incrementally, on, on small increments, that taxes do go up somehow. I mean, it's just, just the way it is. And I think those taxes will be offset and, and, and limited as, on, on the promise that we, we do get higher sales tax. And, and I think that, that's the, the, what we're, we're really shooting for is, is a higher sales tax, not, not increase the sales tax percentage, but just have more sales, point of sales. And, and that's really, should be our goal, I believe, because, you know, property taxes is, is primarily funding the schools, you know, funds us, but sales tax is our go-to. And we have to really invest in our town for the promise of higher sales.
I, I would agree with that because property taxes are the people that are living here. Sales tax are getting people that don't live here.
Correct.
And that's where we want to.
I mean, again, you know, to that point, I mean, a gas station on, on, on Wilson and, and Kirk Road, when we got that piece of property, it was given to us. I mean, there was some battles that we didn't want that property because it was going off to tax rolls. Well, it was a great gift to the city of Batavia because the gas station, I mean, it got truckers in there, people going back and forth from north to south and south to north, purchasing gas there who don't live in the city of Batavia. And we have the same thing out on Randall Road. And so as you say, car dealerships are great, but gas stations are equally as, as so.
We got six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for that free piece of property.
That was a gift.
That's where some of our reserve comes from, I think.
Yes.
That is correct, yes. I recall that we had those discussions.
Right. Peggy, what are we getting from the waste transfer station this year, do we know?
About five hundred and sixty thousand.
Still pretty good.
It is.
Remember the battles we had with that? We don't want that. We don't want that.
Giant citing your agreement.
Why don't we want that?
One of the few that's around that's viable. So I, I think it gets a lot of use and that's probably not going to go away. What Alman Malay just spoke to, I was out again the other day at Fermi. I haven't, I mean, they're, I'm counting on probably having about eighteen hundred people working out there over the next six to seven years to build this thing. Now they're going to have another groundbreaking for another piece of it that they're going to do. So it's, it's obviously being built. When they get it built, they tell me they're going to be about two thousand more new permanent jobs. And then along with that, they're predicting that we're going to have a influx of ongoing visiting students and scientists and people from all over the world are going to be coming into Batavia. And they're happy, very happy to see this restaurant thing taking place in downtown Batavia because they have a lot of people that come out there and work for twenty hours a day and suddenly, gee, I'm hungry, where can I go get something to eat? And I guess they kind of encourage them to go to the north end of the site, get on Wilson Street and just go down into that town. Don't have to get off the street and you can find all this ethnicity and restaurants that are there. So, you know, I think that's going to be most helpful to us.
Anybody else? I'd like to try to keep us moving forward so that we get an idea of where we want to go with this, what we want to make a decision on. Um, I guess I look at the options that are up there in front of us. I would much prefer to stay with option A. Knowing that we can use our reserves to make that up. Um, I think that in my mind, that's the way to go. We're not making a huge change in it. I can easily justify a dollar a month to somebody, anybody that comes up to me. I mean, I've been beat up for worse, but I can definitely say that I'm okay with a dollar a month. And then when the EAV does go up, if we were to keep the rate the same, we'd be able to get that additional money without changing the rate.
I would suggest that there's probably a good possibility that the rate will stay pretty close to the same, given the expansions we've seen in the industrial park, the remodeling and the things we're seeing downtown. And, you know, right now we've got on the books, of course, we haven't approved the one out on McKee Street yet with MI Homes, but, you know, we've got almost three hundred new houses that are approved to be built. So there's going to be a continued, you know, development there adding on to the value, plus all this remodeling that, I'm not sure Scott can speak to that, but we've had probably more remodeling than we've had in a long time, have we not?
Yeah, I mean, our, our permit numbers are way up even from last year. Uh, and last year we had a lot more permits. Um, you know, remodelings, but, you know, we've also had a lot of storm damage. So we've had, you know, roofs and siding and uh, things like that. But, you know, you've got these homeowners associations that are also doing mass siding improvements. Waterford's doing stairs, they're just doing driveways. So, I mean, we're seeing a lot of just remodeling and rehab type work uh, going on in town too. So there's, there's quite a bit of a permit activity.
I might also say as, you know, with the electric utility that we have, I mean, it, it, it costs us a great deal of money. But, you know, what, the work we had done at the North D substation, I mean, it was, cost a great deal of money, but, you know, you have it in here and, and the budget just, you know, the, the, the value of that is that it's close to the, it's, it's close to the, uh, the, the, the park where we have all our, uh, industrial users. And if we can bring in more industrial users, I mean, they use less fires, less police, they use electricity, they have no kids in school and, or else they bring people in who are going to live in Batavia and shop in Batavia. So that, it's another thing, like a hotel or a car dealership or a gas station. I mean, they're just bringing revenue in and not really.
You're absolutely right. Uh, we are lucky that we have a, a nice mix of industrial, commercial and residential. Our residential is about seventy-three percent of our EAV, but the industrial customers add a lot of value to a community, uh, and for the electric consumption and the property taxes that they pay. And besides that, jobs and employment for the community.
These scenarios, how does that play with the renovations here in the building with the? with the funding for that? With the discussion had been potentially up to three hundred thousand in TIF funds?
That's going to be another slide. It's outside of the general fund budget. It would use general fund reserves, the recommendation was, but balancing the budget is outside of that, um, because we were looking at just a reserves transfer. Um, we would still need incremental funding to the building fund because we're always going to have improvements about, uh, five years from now. There's going to be some masonry, tuck pointing that is going to be rather expensive that we'll need to do. So we will continue to incrementally fund the building fund for ongoing maintenance type issues.
Probably sound like I'm just beating a dead horse here, but another thing that concerned me as well was where we were talking about the telecom tax continuing to decline year over year for several years now.
Yes.
And that's, it's labeled, it's worded as collecting a fee from television providers.
Oh, um.
Can you clarify that or?
What's worded?
Well, in the, in the preface, in the introduction, I, I, I saw that and it kind of startled me or, or jumped out at me as that may be a, a problem that we really need to start pushing others to get ahead of. Um, being where I work, um, I know that the means of consuming television are dramatically shifting and changing. Um, and so not knowing how this tax is.
Yeah. I, I'm not sure which part you're looking at, but there, we have two different types of taxes. We have the cable franchise fee and then, and that's the money that we share with BATV. Uh, we have a five percent and we give two percent to BATV. And then we have the simplified telecommunications tax that is on phones. That's landlines and cellular phones. And that's seen decreases, um, over the years as people shift away from even having a landline. And sometimes the, where the cell phone is, maybe they just have it from their company. So they, it's not even registered in the city of Batavia.
So, so I'm going to propose that one possible reason that this is shrinking year over year is because people are perhaps going to, um, a, a Metronet or a Comcast in this area for their internet connection, but they are not purchasing all of the different television packages. And so their monthly bill is diminished because they are going exclusively to using that pipe to bring in the content from other areas.
Whether it be Hulu or Netflix or.
Many other options out there.
Subscription options that aren't television.
Right. There was actually a big lawsuit on that, uh, but as far as I know, they are not paying the franchise fees at this time.
So, so just as we're seeing in-store sales go down because online sales are going up, we're also seeing our telecom tax go down because the trend in the consumer is changing as well there. So that's two different sources of income. I'm not trying to sound the drums here, but, but we need to be aware of these shifts that are also going to be chipping away at these revenues that we're currently seeing and already seeing shrink.
I have a question about the discussions. We've, we've been talking about this five hundred thousand dollar gap that we have.
Well.
From, from this discussion, how we get the revenue to cover the five hundred thousand dollar? And that's where the three sixty?
Um, actually, no. Um, we already, we had the five hundred thousand revenue increase in the budget already and that still has a five hundred thousand dollar deficit.
Okay.
And the, the discussion here is if we reduce the, the property tax from what is budgeted.
Okay. So we're talking only about revenue so far. And have we gone back and at what point do we go back and look at potential spending cuts to help make up that difference?
That is, uh, the slide that I presented to you here.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Okay.
And certainly if you, whoops. Of course I would hit one too many times. If you've seen items in the budget that you would like to talk about, certainly, um, we can discuss those. We have a very, very lean budget because a large portion is related to salaries and the benefit costs associated with that. So it, it is, aside from capital because those aren't recurring, um, oh, I did it again. Left arrow. Yeah. Except it wasn't hitting previous. Here we go. Can you still see that? If I don't click on it, then I won't have to go through the.
I guess maybe this might be a question for Gary. If we were to redo something like the snow removal down to fifty thousand dollars, would that set us up if we had a heavier snow year than that to pay additional for that? If we cut the contract back? Do you know?
So, I mean, it all depends on what you wanted to do. If you wanted to do the not to exceed it fifty thousand dollars, we would use the contractor up to fifty thousand dollars. And after that, it goes to a level of service issue.
Right.
I mean, it's not, this isn't a skill that my guys can't do. It's a skill that is being done by a contractor because there's a level of service expectation that we get it done in a certain period of time. If we all say that we don't care if it takes another day to get the snow moved, then my guys can do it after they're done doing what they're doing elsewhere in town. That's the reason why we hire a contractor is to get it done in a certain amount of time.
Part of, uh, you know, to Mike's point of being an attractive downtown, my understanding is that we didn't always provide snow removal services in the downtown, but because we want people to be able to walk those sidewalks twelve months a year, um, we want to provide that level of service.
Right. This was, uh, added to the budget about five years ago?
This, this, the contractual downtown snow removal was added when we did, well, in the years following North River Street. I can't remember if it was Houston, but it was right in those years immediately following North River Street. Um, so what Laura just said, historically, it's my understanding that we didn't do all the sidewalk removals downtown, but we had a lot of insurance people and lawyers and other professional services who may not open their doors till ten in the morning and therefore the sidewalks remain untroubled while those folks aren't even at work yet. The city eventually said, no, that's not acceptable. We need to clear all the sidewalks in the downtown. It goes to level of service versus revenue.
But that's changing.
What's changing?
Who's downtown now?
Oh, I know. That's right. Yeah, exactly. Right downtown now, we have, we have the Paneras where people are in there at six in the morning.
Right.
So the question becomes, do you want that level of service? And if you do, it's got to be paid for.
I think we want that level of service, my personal opinion.
Yeah.
I would think the store, the store people want it and the restaurants want it and, and they're the ones who are being, going to be negatively affected by it.
It's one of the things, and I mean, people can, can minimize it, but I don't think it should be. Um, the snow removal that happens in our downtown and frankly throughout the rest of our town is really a matter of pride. Our employees who live in other towns mentioned, you know, coming, driving here today, it was a noticeable difference when you got to Batavia. It was safe to drive on our roads.
At the same token, I'll play the devil's advocate. There comes a point where there's a line and we don't plow those businesses' sidewalks.
So a question I have, the, in the five or so years that we've been contracting that, have we exceeded, ever reached the cap?
Uh, I think the cap's been increased. I think originally it might've been, I, I'm guessing maybe forty thousand and fifty. And just in the last couple of years, it's been increased.
The scope has gotten bigger too because as we've done Houston Street and done.
Yeah, I think that the, yeah, the service area was increased.
But we've been adequate at that cap. Has been enough to pretty much make it through.
I, I believe so.
Yeah, that, yes. And that's always a, with an asterisk when you're talking winter operations because we could have a winter where it could any snow.
Exactly. That's. But I guess, you know, if we did say reduce that to, you know, by twenty thousand down to fifty thousand and we found ourselves in a, um, you know, a blizzard year, um, you know, that could be revisited and amend, amendment.
I see that as a paper cut. I mean, that, I mean, I don't mean a paper cut literally. But I mean, that and assault, I mean, you, you can reduce those values and feel good about yourselves, but in reality, if it snows, we're going to come back to you and say, do you want the sidewalk shovel? You're going to shovel the sidewalk. You're going to end up in the same place anyway. So why, why reduce it just to make yourself feel good upfront when you can end up in the same place all likelihood?
Feel good upfront. The answer's in the question.
Well, we have the same discussion all of the time in staff meetings for overtime and double time. Do you budget the maximum amount just to be prepared or do you try and pick some middle ground? Because it could be a very good year, but it could also be a terrible year.
Playing, going back to kind of your, what you're saying about playing devil's advocate though, if it has been relatively, um, adequate for the years, if you did drop it down, I wouldn't necessarily say you're, um, making yourself feel good because the impact of that is it translates to what we're going to levy. And that also has another message to it. And if you do have the bigger storm, those for me go to, we thought it was going to be this. It has been adequate in the past. We have a larger thing. That's what we have the reserves for. Those are the times where you would dip. Twenty thousand dollars coming out of the reserves is, and is a, a different narrative than saying we have to keep it in there and tax people at a higher rate. Um, you know, that's, that's why we have a hundred and fifty-nine days. We, we always lose track of that every year and we know that it would, keep saying it'll go down. But every year it does seem to work its way back up with a lot of the other things that are done over in the year. And when we're making sure that it all goes to narrative and feeling good about ourselves, I would rather feel good about using those reserves wisely than just automatically going to taxes.
Absolutely. Well, I mean, to that, to that point, I mean, one day of reserves is what sixty thousand dollars?
I think, I think we said it was seventy, seventy-two thousand or something.
And remember, those were the same discussions when we, when was it, three years ago, two years ago, with the using of the, uh, reserves to do the storm bank stable, or the riverbank stabilization. That wasn't being done up until that point. It was never even in the, in the budget. It was just kind of, we, we need to do it. We know we need to. And it was, well, why don't we put it in there out of the, out of the reserves? And instead of, you can either do it now preventatively or you're going to be doing it when we're picking the electrical equipment out of the water because the storm bank or the riverbank collapses.
And that is appropriate use of reserves is to use, uh, for capital expenditures.
And that's why I'm only using that as this analogy. We look back at the way the storms have been and has it been adequate? Do we have enough room to not make drastic cuts that are painful, but absorbable in other places that are offset in the tax rate?
One thing I, I think that is important to note is budgets that we've passed in, in past years have not had the kind of deficit that we passed last year and that's proposed for this year. Um, and we came out ahead because some of those things didn't occur. We budgeted for capital and that capital didn't happen. So that can happen where you end up having surpluses. But budgeting a seven hundred thousand deficit, most likely we're still going to have a deficit at the end of the year. You never know though. Sales tax could pick up tremendously.
Elliot?
Yeah. I, just going to the reserves, I know we, we did spend a lot of time talking about that last year. And I remember that was just one of those things that we kept going back and forth on about, you know, needing to come back to and discuss as a policy perspective as well. But, I mean, even if looking at last year's budget, which I was just looking up real quickly, I mean, our five-year forecast from last year's budget discussions, you know, we were looking at 2022 as whittling down the reserves to sixty-seven days of operation. And this year's budget projection, 2022 is at a hundred and twenty-two days. So.
Right.
I understand it was shifting things. So that, that certainly accounts for a, a portion of it.
And we added revenue increases into the projections for property taxes. Maybe the revenue increases will come from some other source, but that's just where we put it for the projections.
So I, I guess where I'm going with this is again, you know, just not knowing what is in future and, and talking about this notion of, of things changing. Here we saw a change, I would say sizable change for the positive because of our responsibility last year. And I think we're being responsible this year. If we, you know, don't raise the property taxes here, we let the growth continue as it is. Um, if we need to tap reserves for some of these, you know, projects that, that, you know, get us through the, the next year, then I think that that's a responsible thing. But, I mean, I think we've seen enough where we should hold the line for a year. So I guess my, my question would, would be if we decided we wanted to use reserves, what's the number? Right. I mean, I think we're kind of dancing around this. Sure. So what's the number? Is it, we've got a hundred and fifty-seven days budgeted. Are we going to knock down ten days?
That's seven hundred thousand dollars.
Are we going to knock down five days? You know, you, use that for, you know, whether it's a capital repair like the floor drain replacement at Public Works. Um, to me that, that, you know, we, we settle on, on what that looks like. We move forward and we're good. That's simplistic, but.
But I think that's what we have to do. I mean, I made my notes here. We have two questions. Do we do it with reserves or do we, we do it with a tax increase or a combination of both?
The, the recommendation that would be from staff would, if you don't want to do the, and I clearly hear that you don't want to increase the revenues, five hundred thousand, which was the amount that the pension increased for, uh, the police, fire and IMRF, uh, would be to do the scenario A, uh, passing three hundred and sixty thousand to capture the revenue increase in the EAV and cover, uh, some of the operating increases that we have.
Now, remind me again, isn't the pension increase when we levy that, the pension is a separate levy?
It's a separate levy except the, the IMRF is a separate levy as well. We haven't always levied the full amount of the IMRF in the bond or in the levy ordinance, but the, the cost of IMRF in the general fund is two hundred thousand dollar increase. And then between police and fire, it was another, I think, three hundred and sixty thousand.
But those would be separate levies.
Separate levies, but levied in the general fund, collected in the general fund and then paid out to the pension funds.
I, I think I'll revisit kind of a narrative that we looked at, I want to say last year about using reserves. And if I'm Johnny Q taxpayer and, you know, and I see that, you know, our city has well, you know, we have a good amount of reserves, that's wonderful. We've stewarded our, our budgets wisely and we've been able to save money. And if I know that we have a lot of, you know, we have quite, quite the overage, I would rather see us use some of that to, you know, to, for our capital, not pass that on to the taxpayer. That's, we, we talked, we've talked about that time and time again. I think we need to look at it. It's not.
This, this budget does call for, uh, five hundred and seventy-five thousand in capital from reserves.
Right.
It's, it's not any part of the three hundred and sixty thousand.
Right.
I guess I'll just ask the question because I'm not sure what, what you were trying to say, uh, Aldrin Meitzler. Uh, you didn't want to see any increase to the property tax or levy?
EAV is going to go up. I mean, right. I mean, that's, that's going to happen. So, I mean, there is going to be an increase in property tax from the, from the end person's perspective. Um, what I don't want to see though is us raise property taxes further. I don't want to see us go to the additional three percent that I, that I saw we were proposing here.
So when we levy the full amount of the EAV, we're not changing the tax rate. We're just gaining all of the revenue that the city can capture based on the value of all the property. Some people's property tax bill may go up because the, their assessed value went up, but we're not changing their rate.
Right. That would be scenario B. Right. That would be scenario B. The scenario A would increase, have that moderate increase of $12.
Yeah, I mean, I know $12 sounds small, but I know what the Park District wants to do. I know what.
It is small and considerate. I, I have to really encourage you to.
But it all adds up. That's the problem.
Consider it.
All of a sudden, it's going to be $200, $300, $400. Not that it's our fault. We don't have control over that, but what Marty said earlier, let's do our part. Or both of you guys said, let's do our part and just do what we can to give everybody a break, what we can do. And maybe, 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 I know, but maybe there's other officials, maybe there's other people that are listening that say, hey, we're going to do our part too. I mean, everybody could pitch in and start doing this.
So if we do it a buck a month for, for, for the residents, I mean, it's $12 a year. Even right now, we're doing our part. And if, if the Park District says, well, we're going to raise it $10, or whatever it is they do, I mean, that's, that's on them. We can't, we have no control over that and we can't absorb their responsibility and say, well, since they're going up, we won't do anything. We still have to maintain the, the, the services in the city. We have to maintain our infrastructure. So I, I, I don't want to pay more taxes, but if that's what it calls for, to, to, to continue moving the city in a forward direction. And it's, it's not like I want to, every, every year, we have this discussion and say, let's do another $12. I don't want to do that either. And, and so, but we, I, I don't think I want to cut services. I can tell you that. And so if we have 159 days of, of, of reven, of, of, of reserves, well, as Scott was saying, take 10 days, that's $700,000. Cover everything. And then we don't raise taxes. Well, that might be, might be responsible, or we, we, we split the difference somehow. I, I don't know. But I don't, I don't want to be cutting services. That's, I know that.
And I, I understand exactly where you're coming from. The, what I also recognize is exactly what you said with, we need more spending from other people. We don't just need, you shouldn't be the ones that just because you own a house or you own property, that you're the one solely funding the city. Property ownership shouldn't be that you're the only one that funds this community. It needs to be, I 100% agree with you, that we need to encourage more spending from everyone, not just taking it from the property owners. And how we do that is going with what Scott kind of said is figuring out, to your point, figuring out that right amount of dollars that we've already collected that would also encourage people. Economics is, economics is all about just having that mindset, too. You can be, you can have a million dollars in your bank account, but if you think you've got no money, or you think you've got all the pressure, you're not going to spend it. But if you think that things are good and you think that things are going well, which is why I really feel we've been successful over the last 10, 15 years. We have consistently spent more in different areas. We've re-added positions that were cut back in the, the 2008 recession. But I think as we all pay attention to what, yes, the, the stock market's at its highest it's ever been, but not everybody really feels like that because I think everybody's waiting for it to happen again. And that we're right back to where we were 10 years ago. I think that a lot of people really feel that. I don't think people are going, we're in the happy hayday at all.
I, I want to get one more thing in here before we go much further. We talk about, we don't want to raise taxes, we don't want to raise taxes. But every time we have passed an increase for our employees, whether it's 2%, 2.5%, or 3%, or whatever we've done in the last three or four or five years, we've never had this much discussion about it. So we're all okay with giving that away or spending that money on our employees, which is 70-some percent of our budget. But when it comes time to raise the revenue to pay for it, we don't want to do that. That's one of the things I feel really strange about this discussion right now, is the fact that we don't have this kind of discussion when we're saying, yeah, it's okay to give a 2.5% increase to all our employees, but we have to be able to pay for that. And we haven't had that discussion when we've been in that situation. So I really feel like, yes, we have to use the reserves, but we can't walk away from maintaining the services that we expect, or we've become expected to provide. And what we want to be able to provide to keep the city growing and to keep the things happening downtown that we've got going on. So, I mean, as much as I don't want to say to do it, I think we need to do the scenario A, it's a very small increase. And I feel like that's where we need to go.
I, I would agree with that. And that, that $12, you know, some, you know, it is an increase. However, it's important that we do maintain so the value, our EAV keeps going up. You know, sure, there are market forces out there out of our hands that can, you know, change that EAV as we've seen within this last decade. But it shouldn't be on our part that we're cutting back on things and reducing our own EAV. By, by, I think it's a, doing a blend of reserve and this moderate increase, that's not, you know, that, that's within, without having to go to, to black box notice. I think it's a responsible thing to do. I think, I believe that a $300,000 house with a, a $12 increase will increase by at least $12 in value. I would venture a lot more than that by our doing. Someone, you know, larger market forces, yes, that's, that's out of our hands. But I think the responsible thing to do would be maintain what we've got going so we can continue to make this a desirable place so people want to keep moving here and the values of our houses keep going up. I think it's a good investment.
You technically can't say that, though, because 10 years ago, our houses were worth more than they are today.
And that's why I say there's other market.
Analogy really doesn't work.
Yeah. But that's, that's other market. That's not the, our decision-making in this room. We have to operate in this room as, what are we going to do for Batavia to make it the best Batavia?
And, and.
Yes, I agree. But your analogy doesn't work.
So I'm going to put out, I know we're talking about reserves again and, and I'm going to throw kind of a wrench into things. I don't mind using reserves because we have such a large number of it. But, but I'd be really hesitant to be hitting it hard. I have an article in here and there's a guy, he's a, an engineer, he's a, from Carnegie Mellon. And again, we have climate change and we don't know what's coming at us regarding climate. And, and, and we see it, we have the 100-year flood yearly now and we're spending money on that. And so I think eventually there's going to be some catastrophic event that could be coming towards us, you know, look what happened in California. I mean, I don't know what it would be, but we're, we're, we're coming into something. And so I'd rather keep reserves so we can deal with what we don't know is coming at us. I think that's kind of having some vision of the future, not knowing what it is, but trying to prepare for what we don't know. I, I think that's really important. And I'm not opposed to taking some money out of the reserves, but I, I'd be real hesitant to be hitting it hard.
Mark?
So whether we've been lucky or, or good, I don't, I don't know how to describe it. But if we go back to the first time we were predicting budget reserves, back in 2016, predicting budget reserves for 2020, it's gone from, we expected, I'm going year by year when I do this, 4.3 million, 7.5 million, 7.8 million, 10 million. And yet we're at 11. What was it? So that, those numbers.
Right. There's a lot of factors that go into those numbers. So you can't really go back and say, well, this year, because there might've been decisions that were made to transfer, we transferred money for some capital items and changed the items that we used to, as I mentioned, we increased revenues this year because it's unrealistic to think that you're going to exist five years from now and not increase your revenues. So we put those assumptions in there. And I go back and I look and I'm like, well, why did we make this assumption this year? And what were the things that went into it to, to see why we ended up? At, you know, looking at it, it doesn't make sense. Maybe, you know, but you have to look at all of the factors that go into it. We've added staff. Staff is not in any of the projections. But in this case, we also increased some revenues in those years. We increased the non-home rule sales tax, which when we were making the projections, then we didn't know.
I just want to, the, the part you were saying about the, having the discussions, I, I don't think that's correct at all. It's correct in that when it comes to us, it's after HR has already negotiated. We don't, we're not part of the negotiation process of, with the unions.
I don't think it's just her.
No, no, no.
No, no.
No, I'm, no, I'm talking about what Alan was saying about that. But you have to go back to each year for the last three years, we have fully, we have fully discussed and given direction and put on, put staff on notice, our concerns. I know Mike has mentioned it a lot of times about when we're hiring, we're going to have the impacts of the pension and we're going to have, is it, is it sustainable to add people to it? And it also influences the decisions about maintaining the staff that we do have. It goes to Abby's points about when you build the house, you also got to plan for the road and the construction of that road. We are having those discussions. We're not having the discussion of when it's time to approve that 2.5, because that's already been through giving the direction to kind of Wendy so that she has an idea about what she, what they know that we can afford and can't afford.
We can't keep saying to add staff or to keep agreeing to pay increases if you're not going to increase revenue.
I don't think we're saying that we're adding staff because none of those positions were adding the staff.
We've already added staff this year. We've already agreed to new pay increases for the employees. Somehow that has to equate.
Real estate taxes isn't the only source of
Right.
revenue increase.
Right.
So our revenue does continue to go up.
We've raised things. Last year, we raised quite a few. Kerry?
If I may, just from the first comment regarding union negotiations. I mean, Wendy receives guidance from city council before we even walk in the door. So we don't negotiate in a vacuum. We come back to you in the end and say, this is what's been negotiated. And that guidance has been followed through on, on the salary side. Never, never will we come back to you and say, well, you guys gave us guidance to give them 2%, but we thought it'd be great to give them four, so we gave them four. We've never done that.
That's not what I meant to say. What I meant to say, or what I'm trying to get the point across, is that we can't keep saying yes to those other things without figuring out how to pay for it. And this is one of the ways to pay for it is to incrementally increase the tax rate, whether it be on sales tax, whether it be on property taxes. You know, we have all those things as options to us. This is one of them where I think this year, we have to have a mix of it.
And I'll piggyback on that because we did increase the property taxes to fund the building inspector and the police officer. But their costs are going, you know, to compound each year. So there has to be some kind of revenue increase for that. And just the pension costs alone are increasing 500,000. That doesn't include any of the wage increases or any of the other operational cost increases. And we're only asking, we're only asking for 500,000, but lowering it to 360,000 is the only revenue increase that is being proposed here. When the increase in costs is, is much more. I think that's very reasonable. It makes it very difficult when the, the service level is expected to be a certain level and there's such reluctance. I have to say it. It makes my job very difficult.
Well, we don't want that.
So I can, the choices are, we either go with one of the scenarios that's been provided here, or we say no to that and we take it all out of reserves. If, if that's what the majority wants, then I think we need to vote on it. I mean, if somebody wants to make a motion, we could go with scenario A, we use 360 as the tax increase number, and that's what the rate becomes. And it's $12 a year more for a $300,000 house. Or we take it all out of reserves and don't have the tax increase.
But if I look at scenario B at 250, then I'm taking out four days of reserve along with the 250,000. So when we talk about reserve, we go from 151 to 147 with scenario B. Scenario A, it's go from 151 to 149. So we were talking earlier about what's the number on days of reserves? I don't think we're doing that big a hit on the reserves. Personally, I like scenario B because it does not give a tax rate increase to our residents.
And until we get the, the levy, we don't know exactly what the tax rate would be.
We, right. Until we get the final value.
It'll be somewhere in that neighborhood.
But we're not going in asking for another quarter percent on, on existing property taxes. We're not going in and asking to increase the rate ahead of knowing the value.
I, I just want to point out that the 500,000 increase to the levy represents a 3% increase in our levy amount, but a point, .3% increase in the total tax bill. Right. It would be, these two would be less than that.
So pension costs going up $500,000 this year. Safe to bet that number's not getting any smaller next year?
I, well, honestly, I don't think it will increase 500,000 next year. I'm hopeful that it won't. Investments, but when it was, the valuation was done, they were really poor. So it, it could have increased it a little bit more. But overall, they're not going to go down, but they may not increase by 500,000. I think it would be unlikely that it would increase that much again. But our wages are, will increase. And we were very fortunate this year in that our health insurance only increased .9%. That really helped a lot, too. So hopefully, we will have some low increases for that, too, because we're adding the HMO option and that could save some health costs there as well.
I'm a fan of B as well. Same for the residents.
I, I would like to also point out that there are, are one-time revenues in the budget from development that we'll see this year, this coming budget year and maybe some in the following budget year. But those will drop off. And then that's going to create a wider gap. So we'll be looking at a $770,000 deficit for this year with that scenario. I don't know how, you know, the following year, we'll have to find a way to balance the budget as well.
Yeah, I gotta say, I'm with, with Alan on this one. I was just trying to project out into the future where everything's going. Every, and the cost of everything to us keeps going up year after year.
And these two are for no black box?
Yes, both of them would be in that scenario. I guess maybe something to think about is, would it be better to have a couple of years of small increases or a larger increase in a future year?
That's, that's.
That's, that's an option, too.
That's where I see. Is two or three years from now, we're going to have a five or a 10 cent increase that we're going to have to do because one, we won't have reserves to make it up with. And two, we may or may not have EAV increases by then. And all the one-time stuff will fall off after the housing is built, if it gets built.
Did you say that 10 years ago?
I pretty much fought most of the time to try to be in the middle of the road between aggressive and conservative.
There's another thing to consider, though, in doing that. It might force the hand of what is the service levels that are sustainable for a community that you really want. If, if you're really looking at a 15% tax increase, then you put it back to the residents. you're really looking at a 15% tax increase, then you put it back to the residents and go, what service levels do you demand and really have that cost? You know, and then we, then you really start having those discussions about what are you willing to pay for and what can you pay for? Just at some point, just like everything else with this state, it's going to come to a head. And do you force it incrementally or do you rip the bandit off when you need to rip the bandit off and say, it's, you know, get off the pot time?
Well, we made the decision to add another police officer. We've made the decision to add other personnel to community development because we heard from the public that they can't get things done fast enough, that the process is too slow. So we've tried to respond to the things that the public has told us that they want and now we have to pay for it.
I'm more in line with scenario A. I think incrementally is less shocking to the system and people can make their adjustments on an annual basis perhaps, as opposed to just getting hit with a big thing and they say, well, how are we going to do this? Then it gets to be unaffordable. I mean incrementally, it eventually gets to be unaffordable also. I don't mean to discount that, but just that one year unaffordable gives them absolutely no time to react, like how they're going to deal with it, you know?
It's sudden death or a death by a thousand cuts.
Take a thousand cuts.
But which is going to kill, you know, which, what are we, what are we trying to accomplish is really still what we need to focus on? What are we, what are we doing right? What are we doing wrong? What do we need to correct? What do we not need to correct? Those four, that's not a, that's not a.
Let's get into the weeds for me.
I guess I'll say I would stand with scenario B still. You know, if I'm going to go and have conversations with people about, you know, needing to increase their property taxes, I want to know that I have the credibility to say that, look, I put it off as far as I could and now it's really game time and we have to do it. If I have to do that every single year, I'm losing the credibility that it's always necessary because it's always going only one direction every single year. Last year, I voted against the budget for that same reason because once again, we were looking to increase it. I understood it. I understood it, but I still, I couldn't get to that certain point where we were trying to find the balance that the majority came to, lived with it, totally get it. Here we are again, though, discussing how we have to once again raise property taxes.
Well, then what do we need to cut? We're not gonna.
I hear that. Laura, is your mic on?
Yeah.
And I understand that, but the point about, the other point of that is, you could lose people right now. Who are we losing that can't afford to live here anymore? You know, we hear from a lot of elderly residents, I can't afford to live here. We've got a lot of long-term residents who have lived here their entire lives that now tell us, and you look back 10, 15, 20 years ago, what the tax rate was, and then you do understand that it's been going up to the point where people that, that lived here their entire lives, 50, 60 years, now they're going, I can't live here anymore. So do we, do we say, which, and there is, and there is no right or wrong answer. Which do you then influence your decision? Do you cut loose the people that have lived here for generations or do you cut loose those people that they're not getting, their leaves picked up as much as they want anymore? I don't, which is the right answer? Who knows? That's the philosophical discussion that governments will always have.
The absolute reality is, you can choose either one and we'll be fine this year. It's future years. You're going to be facing, passing a sales tax increase and a property tax increase most likely. Because as we talked about, some of these revenues that we've seen growing are going to be shrinking. And we know that our costs are going to continue to increase. The general fund is supported by taxes. That's what supports it. We have some fees for services that we can assign, the leaf and brush fee, we collect for that. Some for police services that are hired out for the liaison officer, but very minimal. Almost everything comes from some type of tax, either the telephone tax, the cable TV tax, utility taxes and property taxes. We still, we could increase utility taxes for electric and water. I wouldn't recommend it because that hits people even harder than a property tax increase. And I know you said, we can't punish people that own property, but you have to assume that if it's a rental property, the owner's taxes are going up, they're going to pass it on in the form of a rent increase. You have to assume that it may not happen, but that does hit everyone to some degree. But future years, it's going to continue because we can't pass that kind of deficit from year to year.
There is also another elephant in the room, which is the marijuana tax projections that you have in here are 30,000. And we don't know if we will even collect that 30,000 or, or whatnot.
Right. We don't know. I don't even know if the sales will start January 1st or not, if they'll start collecting that.
And regardless of whether or not we have any taxes collected in this town as a result of that, we have nothing to defray the costs for increased services that we're probably going to have no matter what, just because it's going to be legal in this community. So there is, there is going to be a level of increase for that and we don't have a way to fund that no matter what. And that is concerning for me because I don't talk about things that we can or can't budget for or what the unknowns are. That is a huge unknown that bothers me.
But it's going to be, I mean, it's going to be legal in every community.
Right.
And so we don't know. I mean, so this community, every community, the discussion is we're going to sell it here.
And just one more thing I'm going to add. A dollar today is worth more than a dollar tomorrow. So it, there is an impact by increasing incrementally rather than doing it as a large sum later.
I'm going to get the history straight here. In 19, the early 1980s, the municipal property tax rate in the city of Batavia was a dollar five. You can go check the record. And that's one of the reasons I ran for mayor at that point in time was, is that we needed to change some things around here, specifically the thinking of the community about not allowing any business on Randall Road. Because we needed that sales tax ability out there that we got when we, when we put it into place. Had nothing to do with property taxes, but what it did then serve to do was bring the property tax down, you know, well over 30 cents from what it was. And so I've always taken a great degree of pride in certainly the work of the city council in helping us to achieve that. And this group specifically has worked very hard, in my opinion, and has a lot of long discussions about how we keep costs under control so that we don't find ourselves back up at 1980 levels of a dollar five per hundred dollars of assessed valuation like we had. So we are today sitting here, and I appreciate the argument. It's quite honestly, it's a, it's a nice argument to have. It's, I mean, it's, when you think about where we were and where we are right now and what we've been able to put on the table and change for the community, people can complain about, oh, your taxes are going so high, but if we had left things the way they were in two, early 1980s, I don't know where those tax rates would be. They would be much higher, I'm afraid, than what, what they are today. But we, we were able to bring those down. And another thing that was allowed to happen was, is that we were able to, a very unique moment in US, in Illinois government, was when the decision was made to allow Batavia and even St. Charles to have a referendum to vote themselves out of the property taxes at the DuPage Airport. We had one, one shot at that and we did. And that's almost unheard of in Illinois that people could vote themselves out of a property tax, but we did. So that was another, another positive note on the tax bill was that we got the DuPage Airport off of our backs. So there has been a lot of progressive things done to kind of bring some levity and control and understanding as to what's really important to the people of Batavia. And I think all of you should sit here tonight, I appreciate and admire your discussion, but you have all been party to this whole conversation and budgets you've voted on previously that have allowed Batavia to kind of have bragging rights, I'll call it, in the way that our tax rate is right now. And I really appreciate the debate here tonight about the concerns about caution as to where we allow this thing to go in a different direction, where it could be in a couple, three years. I think that's real healthy that all of us hear that and understand it. And we got a great finance department here that really keeps their handle on this thing. And if something is going to go awry, I have full faith that Peggy Colby will be the first person out there to tell us, well, this just changed and we need to adjust our thinking as to how this is all happening. So I guess I would tell you, I would think either option on the, on the board here would probably be okay. And you guys decide that, but I just wanted to set everything straight that we are a lot lower today than we were 35 years ago.
When you brought up the downtown planning, it reminded me that there was some real hopeful moment when we were reviewing those plans where it said, and this was, you know, in the downtown plan from whenever that was published, that in our downtown area, we've, I think it says, there's room for like four times the commercial space that we currently have. And we've only opened up more space, I think. I don't think we've built that much since that plan has been in place. So four times the taxing potential in our downtown. And so that's what's been really fun about reviewing those plans and coming up with some strategies to try and address development downtown because then we're adding, we're adding to the tax rolls without adding more infrastructure and stressing that budget. And so I think whichever way we go, if we can have some really great conversations about focusing on those strategies moving forward so that we can spread out the tax burden and get a little bit more built down here, smart development rather than just growth.
Well, and just, just to tag on to that too, I mean, that's part of, part of this, you know, redevelopment of our economic development department, right? Not just the downtown, which is, which is important, because it can, it can handle a lot of growth. It really can. But, but the outsiders and industrial parks and the, you know, and fishing after those, you know, those industries that will benefit our community, not just catch as catch can, not just whoever lands in our lap, but we need to be out, going out and targeting industries, whether it's a car dealership or a hotel or, you know, a server farm or, or something like that. We need to create a targeted list to be able to go after. And that's, and hopefully, that's, that's what we'll see. You know, I want to, I want to see a hit list of, you know, people that we're going after. Again, this is another discussion, but we always, we always talk about it at budget time. So because these, you know, because we don't want all of our fortunes to be, to be borne on the backs of our residents. We don't, we can't, simply can't. And so that's, that's where this, this economic development department is so critical in, in, in moving forward. And I'm looking forward to how that shakes out. But that's, again, it's a bunch of time, so we're going to stress it because this is the time to stress it. So.
So you know, Scott?
One minute.
Nick Sings.
Oh, thank you. I just, I've been sitting back and witnessing this and a couple observations. One, we are this close. I mean, so close to where my heart rate didn't go up once tonight or even going through any of the budget. And that's kudos to you, Peggy, and the whole atmosphere in presenting this. There's no animosity. It's how are we going to get through this as a team? And I really appreciate that. And you can sit back and watch and it's amazing how that, that comes, even if there's, you know, a little debate here and there. The only thing, I would say, because we're so close, I will always lean towards the, the no increase. I just want to point out a couple of things that, that do keep coming up. One, that yeah, our costs keep going up, but that doesn't have to be captured strictly by real estate taxes. So revenues will keep, continue to go up as well. And I'm always scared when a government body is like, well, you know, let's get it now while we can because that's what my impression, what the school district does. Let's get all we can this year because who knows if we can get it next year. So they just keep doing it and it becomes a habit. And we don't want to get into that, that habit. So I wanted to point those things out that I picked out, but it's, we really are so close, no matter what option is, is amazing that we're here. So thank you.
I want to say is, you know, I agree everything you just said, Scott. I mean, that's what I was saying earlier is, you know, we need a hunter, not a farmer, you know? And to Abby's point, I mean, because that'll take, that'll take the burden off the backs of our taxpayers, off our residents, to Abby's point. And to Nick's point also is, is, you know, we can't do it all on property taxes. We have to do it on sales tax. And how do you do it on sales tax? Again, is we have to, we have to bring people into our downtown. And if we have, we have 75% more of space in our downtown or four times as much space, let's start filling it. The way to fill it again, and I'll be gone. But it's just, it's a vision thing. And I want everyone to just kind of think about is, is we have to really develop our downtown still. And I believe it's doable. It's going to, it's an investment in our downtown. It's going to cost money. And incrementally, again, we have, we have to spend the money. I don't know how we're going to get the money, but we do have to spend it because it'll bring people into our downtown. It'll bring shops into our downtown, better restaurants into our downtown, possibly a hotel into our downtown. It'll just bring people into our downtown. That's why Washington Place, I am so strongly behind that, that it will be hugely successful for our downtown. And the streetscapes, I mean, I think they're, they're vital to our downtown. And it's going to take 20 or 30 or 40 years, but the decisions will be made in the next two or three years, four years. The people on this council will be making those decisions for the next 50 years. And it's, it's critical that you continue to, and vital to envision that future. And maybe they'll put a sign up for you, but, you know, dedicated to, to this council or whatever council, but it's important to do it for the future. And I just want to leave everyone with that, that it's, we have to keep thinking of the future and our downtown is going to be the future. And as is our industrial park, but the downtown to bring the restaurants in for our sales tax.
Just, you know, to kind of tag on to what you're saying, Mike, and what the mayor said earlier, you know, in the, in the 80s, you know, he, he ran, it really addressed the need to grab, to get our, you know, tax dollars out of Randall Road, which we accomplished. I mean, that was, that was hugely, a huge move forward for our community. And I think as important as that is looking back into our downtown and reinvigorating our downtown. And it's, and it's starting. It really is. But I think we have to maintain the course. And that requires vision and requires, you know, a lot of planning that's going to go along, you know, way beyond the time that we're going to be here. But, but as, as important as Randall Road was to, to our community moving forward in the 80s, reinvesting in our downtown is, is as important to move forward, in my opinion.
Tony?
Nick, you're right there. Well, I don't know if I totally agree that they're, they're this close. I'm hearing a concern that Peggy's sharing, that we risk a cliff coming up. You know, it's much easier to climb a gradual slope over time than to have that, that cliff. It becomes harder to continue to maintain. It becomes harder to continue to maintain and to continue the vision when you bump up against a cliff, and you have to make that difficult decision.
Cliffs in our head, we don't see it.
True. The $12 increase is, that's less than CPI. I don't think that's unreasonable to ask that we increase our revenue to keep up with the cost of living, because all those things are going to keep going up. I'm in favor of Scenario A because I don't want to have this great work we've been doing, we risk the chance of saying, oh, we got to rein it all back in, rather than stay the course gradual. I'm not saying that we should, you know, go black box or anything. You know, that's, I think we're all on board with that. That's, we don't want to go that route. But I don't think a $12 increase, while it is an increase, I hear that, but it's not any more than the cost of living. And so I think we need to stay on course with Scenario A.
And I fully respect that, and I understand that. But the part that I keep going back to is, from being on why I love this discussion part every year, apart from the fact that we haven't been able to raise an Italian's blood pressure. I mean, we should just walk in the room. But for me, I keep going back to like what Mike said, but it goes to what Abby's saying. We can either be afraid to come to that wall where we're thinking we're going to have to raise. And if we asked ourselves like seriously, in our heart of hearts, do we think that next year or two years, we're going to hit that wall? I know I don't. I want to keep it in the back of my mind for influencing those decisions to make sure that we're doing all those things, like Abby's got ideas on. That is why we will do that and why we will continue on, to Mike's point about the growth. There's our motivation to make sure that we follow through on our goals and our ideas because if we don't, we know that wall's coming. So to avoid that, we just grow smartly in the ways that we need to. We know what needs to be done. We've been incrementally doing that type of growth for the last 10 years with the start of River Street and all that. That is part of the plan. And it goes for me, why exactly I bought into, because you think back to 2013, everybody was like, why are we spending on streets? It's ridiculous. But you've got to find that right balance of making sure that the businesses want to relocate, so you need to have the nice streets. You need to have the nice streets to bring those businesses. It's symbiotic. That's natural, smart growth. And I think we're on the cusp of what a lot of us agree about how we need to grow going forward. That's going to push back the need for coming to that cliff and panicking. Now, all of this could, you know, go away tomorrow, but those things are unknowns. I would rather believe in an unknown of the things that have already been working with a lot potential than fear kind of guiding us about what we need to do. So it just goes to narratives and how people feel about spending their money. We want them to spend their money. We're not trying to stop people to spend their money. We want them to spend it smartly.
Mark?
Yeah, I mean, again, I keep on looking at B. And one of the reasons I look at B, and you talk about CPI and everything, I'm fairly confident, and I know it didn't happen last year. I didn't get a raise last year. I don't expect to get a raise this year. So taxes around keep on increasing around me, making it harder and harder for me to stay here. And so my cost of living goes up, but I'm not increasing my revenue. So that's, what am I supposed to do? You know, that's going to drive people out. So what does that do for other people that don't make as much money as I do, when it seems small, but when you don't get a raise, that, all those little bits, and like we said, there's a bunch of taxing bodies that are going to come out and they're going to say, yep, we are going up, and we're going up, we're going up. I don't want to be part of the problem. I want to be part of the solution.
Is there an option C? Somewhere between?
There is. Take everything out of reserves, and we don't raise taxes at all.
Right. If this is the direction that you want to go, the option C would be, we shouldn't have probably added employees because we will, if we are going to continue to not increase anything, we're going to have to lay people off at some point. I'm not saying that as, you know, if that's the direction, that's fine, but...
Let me rephrase. Let me rephrase.
You mean, is there something between $250? We're talking about $110,000 here is the difference.
Right. This is not a lot of dollars. I mean, to Nick's point, we're, I mean, your blood pressure's fine. That's wonderful. I mean, but, I mean, if we increase levy by $300,000, right down the middle between those two numbers, you know, that's, what is, I mean, what does that, what does that look like? Is that a $6 increase over the course of a year?
It's not, it doesn't equate exactly.
I know it doesn't weigh like that, but ish.
It would be between $2 and $12.
Six.
Right.
And part of the discussion that I would like you to talk about tonight, too, is if you would like to see us come back with cuts, because those ones I put up there were just from me.
Yeah.
And I think it would only be fair that all of the department had sat down and that we came up with them together.
So, okay, we have three questions before us now. How much do we want to take, if any, in a tax increase? How much do we want to take out of reserves? And do we want to go through and start cutting stuff out of the budget? I mean, I spent a lot of time reading through just individual accounts and looking at them and wondering, what do you really get out of those? What do you really cut back out of those? Do we go through and say, okay, we're not going to do any training because we figured we can cut $8,000 out of our budget? What does that say to the employees that we want to do more because we're not going to add another employee to their department because we're not going to increase taxes to do it?
I mean, it's a lean budget.
As we're saying, to amount, we look at a few dollars.
And I fully respect that, but kind of like along what Mark's saying, I did get a raise this year, but I'm not going to training. They're pulling back on training. Am I a worse employee because of that? Was that good to begin with?
You put the question out there.
That is a whole nother meeting.
But these don't have to be, these don't have to necessarily be adversarial or, you know, getting mad about thinking about the cuts. We do it all day long. Do you want your kids to do this? Absolutely. And it breaks my heart sometimes when I'm like, I can't let you do that, but I can let you do this differently. So while we're saying, you know, would we want to entertain what cuts could be there? Sure. Will we know there are sacrifices as a result of that? Absolutely, because we're doing the same thing. We know that with a cut here, there's a reaction just as much as an increase over a year. So neither of them say anything about the person, that you're less because you want to raise taxes, or you're less because you want to make cuts. We just have to figure out what we can live with and what we think people can afford. And that's the way I think we approach it, and that's why we won't have to worry about Nick having a grabber.
I think I'll get Gary before he does back there.
I agree with what Peggy said. I think that each department head can evaluate their budgets and identify potential cuts. But I'm going to throw a tough question out to city council. You guys added several hundred thousand dollars to this budget in strategic initiatives with no identified revenue source. And I'll just point to like the roadway diet and the bike racks. That's $150,000 on those two items alone, no identified revenue source. And that, there's, that comes too.
Mike?
Peggy, I have a question. If we went with Scenario A or Scenario B, we need to do cuts?
It would be your decision if you would want to pass a budget with the operating deficit.
But even, even, even...
Right.
Even choosing...
You would be using reserves.
We would still require to do some cuts.
Or take from reserves.
Or take from, it would be a planned decision to use reserves to cover that operating deficit.
How much reserves for? Well, for A and B, obviously, there'd be $110,000 between the two.
Right.
How many days are we talking? How many, you know?
It's not significant. The more important thing that is the takeaway is looking at future years and sustainability, knowing that some of these other revenues, the one-time revenues from development, are going to drop off.
The compounding effect.
Right.
That's my concern.
Absolutely. It's not this year. It's future years.
I agree with that concern, and I wouldn't normally do it, but we have so many uncertainties of, on the growth side, that we're not sure about. So why not pick a year and see, are we correct in our predictions or are we not correct? Is there more or less? Then we can adjust. We don't have to panic and adjust now in case things turn out the way they are. I mean, I'm optimistic, but...
Well, that's why I want to split it between reserves and whatever increase, if an increase we decide on. I don't want to do all of one or all of the other. I don't think that that's the right way to handle it, especially when we do have healthy reserves. So, you know, I kind of wrote my list of what I wanted to make sure I got across tonight. And I think the decisions I wanted to try to get us to tonight was to make those decisions. What part of it do we want to do with reserves, and what part do we want to do with an increase, if an increase? Or do we want to do it all with reserves and cuts?
You know, Elliot made a point earlier, and it was one word that stuck with me, and that's credibility. And Nick, you just said another one, optimistic. By going and having as little impact on the resident as possible, we're being optimistic about what next year's going to bring to us. And if we have to go in next year with a rate increase, we've got the credibility because we went in optimistic this year and looked out for their pocketbook this year with the optimistic understanding that we think things are going to be good, and we may be in a decent position again next year. Let's see what it does. I don't see that one year really hits us long-term. We can make a correction next year if we need to and still maintain credibility with the residents.
There's a compounding effect either way. There's a compounding effect of using reserves. There's a compounding effect to continuously, even slowly, raising taxes. Either one is going to have a compounding effect that is going to have ramifications because of it. At some point, that compound for taking the reserves, you're not going to have enough, or you haven't planned correctly. The other, the reverse of that is you have compounded your tax rates slowly every year, and now you have people leaving. And now, when you have people leaving, now you have people leaving with the gap that already exists on a lot of these issues that already exist, and you have an eroding tax base. I'm always going to be more leery of an eroding tax base, whether it be retail or residents.
I would love to hear the mayor come back and say he was at a CMAC meeting, and a bunch of mayors came up to him and said, how did you guys do it and you didn't raise your property taxes?
Because your residents moved here.
Yeah. It would be one more thing that, look, what is Batavia doing that they can do this? Because optimistic credibility.
No.
I'm just going to say this, when I go back to Batavia tomorrow, I'll say, what are the cuts that... This is not our service.
Absolutely.
And right now, they feel like purely, I intend, go back and cut more out of it. And so it is, say, we're able to, even though costs have been...
Mike's don't like you.
The same thing goes for, we are not saying anything about a reflection of their pride of the job. It is no reflection on the fact that the rest of us are doing so much more with less. We are all in the same boat in that position. We all know that. So we don't want them to think that in any way, shape, or form, that if they have to reduce, they're going to have to do more with less, and it's a matter of pride. It's a matter of pride for me, too, but I'm having to do more with less. And I've got zero chance to even have this discussion to be able to influence it. They will come in and just go, you're fired, you're fired, you're gone, just because some stockholders aren't making the maximum amount. And that's more unnerving.
And that's where I think that public sector and private sector differ, in that there's a lot more things that a corporation can decide not to do versus what a city can decide not to do. So we just, and like you say, it's a balance. It's a balance between, we're making a value decision right here, a value decision about when a citizen in Batavia is paying $800 on a $300,000 home for police, fire, public works, $689 for the services that they receive. Is that a value? And should that never go up? Or, you know, is $12 a year in one year for that to go up too much?
I've been the one that's worked in both private and public, and I fully understand, having been squarely in both camps, there are pluses and minuses to both. The security and the job security in being in governmental, the public side of it, is really a huge factor in why I went there initially. Jumping out of that scared me to death, but I make more.
So Peggy, it's a very tight budget, correct?
Yes.
So is there really any fat to cut? I mean, if there's no fat to cut, we're going to go back to staff and say, all right, start cutting some more, and there's nothing to cut? So what are we talking dollar?
As Gary said, it's more representative on some of the things. If we need to buy salt, we're going to have to buy salt. And if we delay buying the jack stands or some of those things, yeah, they'll get by a year, but they're going to have to buy them at some point. You know, small tools, you can make them last another year. They already are making them last as long as they can, and, you know, fixing them, it's not like they, you know, are buying tools to have brand-new tools. It's because they break and they need to buy new ones. So those items that I listed were just some of the ideas for, you know, eliminating some of the new cap or the new equipment, the contract, document management with some software that we were looking at, an HRIS system.
Now, these reductions would only be necessary, these cuts would be necessary if we're not going to take the money out of reserves.
That's correct.
So we don't have to start deciding that we're going to do that until we decide whether or not we're going to use reserves to make up the differences. I mean, I think we're getting ahead of where we're at in this process. And I've got two other people here next. Elliot is next.
So I just want to clarify something that I heard that I really want to make sure that this is not the way it's perceived. I'm not arguing that we never see an increase to cover the services. I'm arguing that every year, we shouldn't have to always increase the costs of those services. And, and I, I absolutely agree with what, what you said earlier, Nick. I mean, the, this is a lean budget and it's articulated here in a beautifully elegant, concise way. And, and I don't wanna, I, I like seeing the detail, but I don't wanna go back into this and, and say, "Okay, this department, well, look at this line item, I think you could." I don't wanna micromanage that. That's not my place here. That's not what I'm trying to do. What, what I, what I do wanna recognize though is that I, I absolutely appreciate what you are saying about your staff finding the ways to maximize the absolute most with the, with the, what we'll, what we'll just say is the absolute least. And, and I, I agree that that's, that's not atypical, but it does need to be recognized. It, it's not atypical because that does happen not just in the public sector, but in the private sector differently. But it, but it does happen in both. Um, but it does need to be recognized.
And just, it, the, the cost will go up every year. You, you said that the costs don't go up every year. Seventy-five percent of the budget is contractually obligated to go up every year.
I, I just wanna make a note about the road diet comment too that, that Gary brought up. And I, and I, and I don't, I got the sense that maybe that is a little out of, you know, hey, we're gonna ask you guys to try and cut and we're, you know, we're just making decisions willy-nilly up here without caring where money's coming from. Um, that's not true. It's not true at all. And, you know, I mean, the road diet is, we don't want kids to have to play frickin' Frogger on thirty-one.
Oh, no. I, I don't think that's what Gary was saying, just to, just, just to say, it's just, we should look at all of the different costs that are in the budget and those costs are part of it.
Sure.
And so, but if we put a cost in and we don't identify a source of revenue for it, that means something's gotta give.
I understand that.
That's all. Not that it isn't a good idea.
Kind of sending that same message that, that we can go through all the strategic initiatives and identify all these great projects. And I'm not saying that they aren't great projects. I'm just saying that if you want great projects, there's gonna happen.
And I, I think what you've seen is us, is us acknowledging that and, and saying, "Hey, we, we don't, we don't wanna waste a breath on this yet" because it's not gonna go anywhere, right? I mean, that's, and, 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 yeah, thank you for saying that. And you have said that for the last couple of years, you've said that. That's true. But the road diet in particular, that kinda got my hackles up a little bit just because.
In this year's budget.
I get it. No, I, I understand that. I understand that. What's the price of a kid?
I agree.
I, I, you know, and I, and I, I, that's, that's where, you know, I, I struggle with that, right? I mean, I, I understand that we, there's, there is not, there is not a, a revenue against it. But if it's, if it's five thousand dollars for training or if it's, you know, two thousand dollars for printing or if it's, you know, I mean, there, there's small cuts. You know, and maybe, maybe that we just need to, you know, tighten it up just a little bit. And I, and I'm not, I'm not making that statement lightly. I'm not because I know, I know that our staff does a phenomenal job.
It is. And, and realize that we are in a growth phase and so asking us to cut muscle may have an effect on that.
I agree. And, and this is, again, I will go back to, this is where we have to sell our way out of it. This is where economic development is critical because it's revenue generating.
So I, I'm just trying to get numbers. I'm sorry. So on, on, on scenario A, right, the cuts are fifty thousand dollars. That's less than a day of reserves. If we did scenario A, correct, then we'd be raising taxes twelve dollars a year.
That's correct.
Taxes. So they're the numbers, the important numbers to know, right?
Yes.
Scenario B is we're not raising property taxes at all, but we're just, we're depending upon the, the EAV.
We're still raising taxes. We're only going to the cap. We use scenario B.
But we're, we're not raising taxes. We're raising the levy.
We're raising the levy.
Okay.
Yeah.
To gain the money. We're not raising the rate. Cause if you go back and look at our property tax rate for the last, what, six or seven years, it's gone up, it's gone down, it's gone up, it's gone down, it's gone up, and it's gone down.
So, so with that, the cuts that I add up here is like a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
On scenario B, it's in addition to scenario A.
It's in addition to scenario A.
So cutting a hundred and sixty thousand total.
Hundred and sixty total, okay, which is about two days of, of reserves. I mean, I don't see that, I mean, I'd rather not do the, I would rather not do the cuts on, on, as, as Laura said, cutting muscle. I'd rather not. I'd rather just take it out of the reserves and do either scenario A or B.
The, the only thing with doing it that way, I, I actually think that we'll need to talk about it because the next year, assuming that we don't, you know, if I'm not as optimistic, it might not grow enough to, then we are looking at cutting even more the following year. So some of these things that I'm not sure that we shouldn't cut a little. Unless, you know, there was a revenue source.
When you make that recommendation, what you think we should cut then?
I, I think that, I feel comfortable with passing an operating budget and using reserves for capital. But it is certainly your, your decision.
So, so what out of capital right now is funded out of the general fund that if we were to move that over to reserves?
Everything that's in the budget, well, almost everything that we, when we presented it with the five hundred thousand dollar increase, we had a four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar deficit. All of that was coming from reserves for capital. There's five hundred and seventy-five thousand in capital.
Okay. So I guess one of, one of the things and the reason why, after we had our last meeting and reading through it again and looking at the numbers that you gave us, I really feel like if we don't do scenario A and have a small increase this year, we're going to have to have an increase next year or we're gonna have to have deeper cuts and more out of reserves.
That's right.
We, I, I think we'll have a bigger deficit next year than we will this year.
We, we will.
Because you're gonna have one-time revenues that occur in twenty-twenty that we won't have in twenty-twenty-one.
That's right.
So to me, the optimistic approach is scenario A. Pay the difference out of reserves instead of cutting and betting on the come that in the future, well, these things will come to fruition and it will.
The EAV goes up enough to that we don't have to dig deeper into the reserves or make more cuts.
Yeah.
I guess I've said all.
Or scenario B is just pushing that, hey, maybe next year, nothing works out and we're gonna do a twelve dollar plus another twelve dollar. Does, or whatever it ends up being. I mean, you're just delaying, maybe we're delaying the inevitable or maybe we're not cause we don't know, cause none of us have the crystal ball that knows exactly what's gonna happen.
We know our revenues are gonna go down in twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, we know our.
We know the one-time revenues.
You also don't know what's gonna happen with the census and what's gonna happen with other economic development that does happen.
But we do know all our other costs are going up, no matter what.
Is there a scenario where it could come in higher than we predict for next year?
Our sales tax could come in higher.
And if that comes in, would we want to put in something this year that we lower it next year?
I don't think that it's gonna come in a hundred and ten thousand higher, but you never know. It, it absolutely could be better. I, I, it, it, there are a lot of good things happening. So that is a possibility. I just wanna make sure that you, you understand that it also is a possibility that it could be a, a, a much larger gap in twenty-twenty-one.
Between the two scenarios, we're talking a day and a half of reserve. So I'm willing to sacrifice a day and a half of reserves, which is well beyond the, a hundred and fifty-nine days is well beyond what we should have.
So I had another slide because we didn't talk about this yet.
Oh, no. Option C.
Door number three.
No. I'm gonna let Laura talk about this.
We talked about the need for the renovations, um, at city hall here as well as at Public Works. This has been in the budget since I've been here. It's been in every budget that I've presented to the city council. And, um, talking about that value of dollar, um, it doesn't go as far today as it would have gone the first time that it was in the budget. Furthermore, the longer that it is delayed, uh, those things that we've planned to do cost more. Things have deteriorated further. So the changes aren't, I don't want people to get the impression that these changes are primarily cosmetic. They're really to accomplish making this building more efficient for its public use. Putting the departments that are public facing right down here on the main floor so that nobody has to take an elevator ride to pay their utility bill or walk up a couple of flights of stairs to do that. But it also improves the security of our building so that, um, people are checking in at a front desk, which is, I think, the norm in most offices that, that people visit these days for security reasons. It doesn't solve all of, of the issues, uh, with regard to the building. It really is, I think, the minimum work that needs to be done in order to be good stewards to a city assets or city assets, because we're also talking about work done at Public Works, a building that needs a new roof. But it also is answering the needs to keep our employees as safe as they can.
Are the days that are listed in here, is that also including a transfer out to cover the budget deficit, depending on which scenario we pick? If we were to use the budget or to, to fund the budget with reserves, whether we do part of it, all of it, whatever we do with that, are those numbers that are up here now reflective of that?
No.
Would that be reducing the numbers that are up there?
It would, but it, I mean, it's, it's not significant.
So who wants to touch this one first?
If you have your budget book or you're looking online, the details of what's budgeted there is on page one hundred and ten so that you can see what the projects are and what they cover. When Scott Haynes submitted the CIP sheet, which is also in the appendix, he included the items for the lead paint separately and some of the other items separately from the rehab itself. And if that didn't happen, some of the, those items wouldn't happen either.
I just feel like this is one of those things that we've talked about for a long, long time. And if anything deserves the use of reserves, this does. You know, every once in a while it'll pop up on social media, why doesn't the city sell the city hall and let somebody else develop and use it for something? And then move the police department and city hall to a new building.
Right.
Somewhere else. Go no further than North Aurora or St. Charles and look at the millions of dollars that they have spent for either a police department or a city hall and police department.
Well, the replacement value is ridiculous.
Right. It, it, it's easily twenty million dollars. And I, I guarantee you, it will take us a long time to put twenty million dollars into this building and maintain it or upgrade it or change it, whatever we want it to be. And I guarantee you, we don't, and the mayor's not here right now. He'll be back. I guarantee you, we don't have twenty million dollars in this building. So I, I think that this is something that we really need to do and the longer we wait to do it, the more it's gonna cost us. And I know the Public Works roof really can't wait a whole lot longer.
Nineteen eighty-eight.
Or that will get more, or that will get more expensive because we could be putting a new building up out there. So I think this is something that we just, we have to say we have to do it. And I think this is one of those things, you know, we wanna talk about how we have to justify things to the public or we need to feel good about or whatever. This is one of those that's super easy. In my mind, this is something we have to do and we should do it now.
I do wanna add, because I have the use of TIF funds on there. When we were, had our staff meeting today, Chris Aiston, our economic development, uh, person, he, he urged us not to use TIF funds for that purpose just because it kind of causes ill will with the other taxing bodies. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that, of that comment.
So one of the, we're, we are capturing the incremental tax value for the purpose of inviting development to an area that we have identified as blighted in order to grow that EAV. Because this is a publicly owned asset, doesn't have any EAV. And so that's why other taxing bodies might not look favorably upon us using the funds for that purpose.
Nor do I.
Marty?
Yeah, um, so just a weird brainstorm as I was just thinking of kind of Gary's point about where are we identifying funding sources? And this is a public building which we have a responsibility to. Um, I don't think anybody here disagrees with that. But then I also look at one of the success stories that, of how a fund, creative funding source was the fire stations on both sides that was funded with the sales tax. The sales tax for those ends in five years. Is there, and I, I'm totally asking because I don't know, is there a way to refinance those, the outstanding debt on those bonds? Add this in and re-extend the tax, the sales tax that is being diverted, well, not diverted, but that is going directly for another public and, another public building, uh, remodel?
That is something that we could have looked at, uh, a few weeks ago, but we just refunded those fire station bonds. And generally it wouldn't, it wouldn't be something where we would add to the, when we do the refunding, typically you just refund that amount. If we wanted to do a separate bond issue, it would make more sense probably just because of the way the underwriters like to do the, the deals, but.
And that was where I was, I'm totally not thinking the exact steps and the logistics through, but the idea being we funded two other public entity or two other public buildings remodeling and with the sales tax portion of it. And everybody really got behind that. This is another way, uh, to not put it solely on the taxpayers, but spread out the, the, the cost of other residents.
And you, you bring up a really good point because we haven't quite got there in the five-year projections, but that will free up seven hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
A year when that debt rolls off. So that is something to look forward to for that.
Improvement fund.
We do have sufficient reserves.
That's where it's from.
But we also could borrow, but it's not really necessary.
Well, and that's why it went to, for one point seven by itself. That's the only reason I was thinking, oh, we've got these other ones, combine them.
Mm-hmm.
Now it makes sense why we would.
And we did approve that sales tax, not diversion, but use for those, paying off those bonds. And I think when that's over, we would have to, we'd still have the sales tax would be enforced, but we'd have to decide what that would, is gonna be used for.
Um, no, not.
It would just go off into the general fund.
Right.
Or we could by ordinance decide that it goes into a capital fund or whatever we, or whatever the city council at that point decides to do with that money.
I don't know. To me, this is a reserve spread.
Right. And I, and I think it's one of those that, well, the reserves are healthy and we can do this at the cost it is today rather than five years from now. I think this is something that we've talked about long enough that needs to be done.
You know, this is, uh, I'm kind of going off script here, Peggy, so you can reel me in if I'm wrong. But one could have looked at our, um, electric utility reserves and said, wow, are those high? But they won't after we have completely rebuilt the substation on the northeast end of town. So occasionally those large expenses like this come up. That is a good use of reserves.
Elliot?
I, I would support using the twenty-three days that's outlined here. I, I think this is one that we've put off long enough. You know, it, it, particularly with the safety aspect, um, I think it's something that we should really consider. You know, particularly with the safety aspect, I think it's something that we should really consider.
And I think the functionality of the building for not only the employees but for the public gets so much better when you put the most used public side of the building in the easiest place to access it.
Agreed.
It will be really nice to have a separation too between the city hall side and the police department side. When people are dealing with police issues and they're waiting in the rotunda out there, they may not want to see someone coming in to pay the utility bill. So that's a really nice service for people who are maybe going through something and don't want to see their neighbor.
Okay, so that should be pretty easy for us to pass that. Well, that won't be part of the public hearing or anything, will it? That'll just be part of what we pass in the budget as far as the capital side?
It's overall part of the budget and will be at the public hearing as part of the budget.
Because I think that's something good that we should talk to the public about, that we are using the reserves to do that, to get this done and not delay it and delay it and delay it again.
Having a central location for the receptionist will be a really good improvement as well. People get lost coming in, just when we're trying to direct them, when we tell them, when you come to city hall, how to get to where they're going. It's nice to have someone that's the gatekeeper.
Okay.
Okay, those are all the slides I had for this evening. I'm not really sure that I heard a direction.
No, we haven't made a decision.
No, it's because you haven't.
It's 9:32 and now we're going to make a decision. Somebody would like to make a motion, I think this is where we should go with this, on what kind of makeup, or do we want to just decide here, what kind of makeup do we want to have on this? Do we want to go for an A or B scenario? And I think I'm pretty confident that everybody said we want to use reserves to make up that shortfall. Is there anybody that wants to go dig back through the budget and figure out how we come up with 20, 30, $50,000 of cuts?
Well, didn't you say that was, that you would want to maybe look at some things?
I think that we definitely should have a discussion. It's just how much? If you are leaving that up to staff to decide, that's fine. Or if you say, no, we want you to find 50 or 160, just so we know what we're working with.
That was going to be my question, do we want to do, if we do A or B, do we want to come up with whatever the shortfall is from reserves alone? Or do we want to say 20%, 50% of the difference has to come out of cuts? How do you want to do it?
We'll leave it to staff.
Yeah. I'd make a motion that we go with option A. We make up the rest of the difference out of reserves. And if staff would like to talk about some cuts to lessen that hit to reserves, they can do that and come back to us, but I didn't, wouldn't...
I think that should be direction from us, the city council. I think we should give them, you know...
You just made a motion.
I know that, but what I'm saying is I don't think we should leave it open to staff. You know, see if you can find some money out of this. If we really truly want them to cut something, we need to tell them what we want cut. If we want $20,000 or we want 120, we should tell them that. I don't think we should put them back into that after they've already been through the budget cycles. They've already said, hey, I'd like to have two new people in my department, but I know we're not going to be able to fund it, so I've cut everything else out.
All right, then I'll make my motion that we...
Can I just say something before you make that motion? Didn't Peggy say that she had some cuts to recommend? I mean, it's not like she's, that she's, we're not telling staff you've got to cut this. She says, we recommend these, not that they...
No, I would like us to have the discussion about sustainability. If the direction is, is that we have to at least be thinking about the future years and looking at spending. And I think we just need to have that discussion. I just didn't know what level, if you were going to use reserves for the full difference. I mean, we can go cut $1,000 out of office supplies across, you know, everybody's budget and see where we're at. I mean, we could make those little kinds of cuts. It's not going to make a huge difference. The big things that I listed for you are document, the document management software and the HRIS software. Those were the two big items.
But are those, those are also two things we've put off for a while, haven't we? On those?
I would say that the HR software is something that we have put off for a while, but the document management software is something that's new for this year.
Well, it's actually the opposite.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we've been, from what I remember, and you can correct me, but I think this is stuff that we've talked about for quite a while and this is something that also is going to help with the efficiency and the organization as a whole.
I think the longer we wait to do document management, the farther we get behind, the less efficient we become in future years. Trying to look things up, trying to find documents, trying to fulfill FOIA requests. I think if we start this now, we start moving forward with, let's say, next year, start scanning, creating those electronic file cabinets. And this is something that I've had in and out of the budget for the past 10 years.
Sorry about that, Howard. But, and then I'll be an advocate for Wendy's software. She's running HR in Excel, so...
I think when you look at the document management system, yes, it's a big first-year investment. After that, I think it's about 64, 6500. 6400 is what we're assuming will be the support after that. So it is a big first-year investment after that it goes down.
Drew, do you want to finish up?
So I'll make the motion, we go with option A, fund the difference out of reserves and call it good.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Was Drew and then Tony? Okay, any discussion?
Well, one of the things that, when we talked, some of the cuts that were up there that we knew could come out of reserves anyway had to do with the downtown snow service in the salt. That if we cut that from the budget and then later on it's like, oh, we need it, then we just do the amendment to take it out of reserves at a later point. If we don't need it, then we don't need it, but that reduces the overall budget. It's, whether we pay it now or later, we may never have to pay it. So if we take it out of the budget, then maybe it ends up just being savings anyway that we would realize this time next year because we would have not used it anymore. I'd be in favor of just saying, hey, why don't we just do those right now?
He's correct. Exactly, we may not need it, but we may.
And if we just don't budget it, then we'd pay for it the same way. We'd pay $4 reserves or we'd pay $4 reserves, so...
We just make a budget that we think is what we're going to spend and the future holds what the future holds. We don't know what that is.
That's right, it's just...
Try not to under-budget because we don't want to be coming back and having to ask...
Sure, but what we're saying is either way, we're taking out of reserves. So why not just not put it in the budget now and we'll take it out of reserves later if we have to? Because if we're doing the same thing, whether we say we're going to do it now or we do it later, it's still the same thing.
I do have one question though, because as I was talking tonight, Gary, was that contract already...
Approved.
Yeah, it was approved, but I was just trying to think in my head, I'd have to look it up. I think it was approved clearly as a not-to-exceed contract, so if we just don't spend it, we... The salt is a little different though. I mean, the salt gets to be a compounding problem if we don't, we have to meet our minimum allocations. We're under a contractual obligation to do that.
We'll meet the minimum allocations for sure with $20,000 cut.
Gary, can I ask, does supply become a problem if we don't commit?
Good, that's the thing with...
And we've seen that happen in Chicago.
Absolutely.
So is it not a problem as you're saying, because it's not to exceed even though we did award it to someone with, that was the expectation?
If the contract is, we can't change that now, can we?
Contract was awarded for, well, contract was awarded, I have to pull up the memo again, it's been now several weeks. But I believe the contractor was awarded for a not-to-exceed amount of X. So if we don't spend that much, technically, we don't have to spend that much.
Right, but we really couldn't cut the budget. Or was that supposed to cross over for the winter season? Is that 1920?
Oh, it always is every year.
Yeah, so actually, I guess we could amend the budget to 50,000 if they chose to. It would just impact 2021.
And unless council tells me otherwise, I'm not telling the contractor not to show up some night. Just save money. I mean, he's still going to show up out there, so it is going to be...
It's the same argument Mark had before. I mean, if we're going to, if we need it, we're going to use it. I mean...
I'm just, I'm just saying, we approved a contract. Does the contractor come back and say, well, you don't approve that in good faith because now you budgeted less than what it's needed?
It crosses years.
He's going to get the same amount of call off.
And they don't care whether they're paid out of their wallet or paid out of the piggy bank.
I think Drew, in his motion, did not talk about any cuts. So unless he wants to amend his motion, we're voting on option A with the balance out of reserves.
Somebody could feel free to make an amendment.
I think we should vote on him just on...
I have a question about whether or not we're all going to vote on that one anyway. I guess if we're going to do an amendment on it, I would amend that we include cuts to the budget for, as proposed by Peggy, for reducing the amount for snow removal and for salt.
I did ask that we be allowed to talk with staff to see if we could come up with those dollar amounts because I didn't talk to Gary before I made those proposals.
I mean, at a staff meeting that I wasn't at a few weeks back ago, I actually came up with a whole list and I don't remember my total value on the list, but salt and, salt and snow operation, well, salt and snow operations was, but that was in a different context, wasn't on that list. So, I mean, I have other cuts that I've thrown out there. I'm more than willing to stand by those. So I would ask, it goes back to what Alderman Wolf said, you guys want to make cuts? Can you please just set a dollar value and have staff identify the best ways to do that? As opposed to...
Yeah, I've been around this long enough through so many budget cycles that you can't go to staff and say, hey, just, you know, clean it up a little bit, get rid of some of what you got. You have to give them a number and then they have to figure out whether or not they can come up with that. Or they'll come to you and tell you, you want that much money, here's what goes away. So that's the situation we put ourselves in.
When I listed those, those were ideas that we could do. But I don't know that, somebody may say, well, I'll give up this if you do this. That's the kind of discussions that we haven't had yet.
So can we really make a decision until we know what conversations are having?
Well, we would need a dollar amount like Alderman Wolf said.
If you want, if we want to give staff a dollar amount, then, you know, I guess we can vote on option A and reserves, or option B and reserves, or just reserves. And then we can come back next week and we can say, hey, we want you to cut $100,000 from the budget so we don't have to take as much from reserves.
And all of that can be decided next week. We can just decide between A or B. And if next week Peggy talks with staff and they're like, oh, by the way, we were talking and this is some additional ideas, or then we can...
A dollar amount would really help.
Right.
It would.
If we want staff to cut it, we either need to come up and say, okay, I want $50,000 off the budget, I want $100,000 off the budget, or I want $200,000 off the budget.
Because we do produce what we think is maintaining the level of service for the year. So to cut something out, it would really help to have that target amount so we can do our best to try to, with that cut, maintain the level of service.
Then I'd make an amendment that we ask staff to cut $50,000 from the budget.
I'm sorry, what?
So we now like to vote on this? Are you okay with that amendment?
He can call it a friendly amendment.
You're okay with that?
Now, if somebody wants to second it, we'll have a vote on it. But I'm going to stick with my original motion.
Anybody want to second the amendment to cut $50,000 out of the budget? I don't have legal advice, but I'd say that that's pretty much deafening silence. Your motion does not pass. And so we have a motion on the table for option A with the difference coming from a reserves. So I guess I have to do a roll call now. Let's start with McFadden.
Hi.
Rosado?
No.
Beck?
No.
Knop?
No.
Silvadi?
No.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meister?
Nope.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
No.
Saron?
No.
Okay, so that dies.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the budget with option B to, and then use the, use reserves to pay for the rest.
Second.
I'd like to make an amendment to your motion to direct staff to find $50,000 in budget cuts.
Second.
Okay.
So we vote on the amendment?
Now we'll vote on that. Let me see, make sure I got... On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Okay.
Discussion on the amendment.
You want to discuss the amendment first?
If there is.
The only reason I made it was you put a, you were the only one to step forward and give a number to staff, which is what they just asked us for. And it didn't carry the first time around, and I can think I know why. So if we're going to vote on the other option, carry forward your same number. If somebody's got a different number, let's hear it. He came out with 50, there's a starting point.
I think Drew came out with, the original number was zero.
Okay, I see what you're saying, Mike.
Okay, so we have a vote on the amendment first since that came up. Knop?
Aye.
Silvadi?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
No.
O'Brien?
No.
Callahan?
Janzit?
Aye. No, Janzit didn't vote for I. He will.
Meister?
Aye.
Malley?
No.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
No.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? I don't know where the number is, so...
Seven, yes.
Doesn't matter.
You said I? So that's eight?
Get in the microphone.
So that's, that's eight? So that would, that passes. Okay, then we have before us option B with reserves and $50,000 for the cuts as our next vote. And who made that one? Uer made that one. Okay, and that was seconded by?
Callahan.
Okay, the public hearing is next Tuesday on or at 7 o'clock or after.
We still have to vote on this. We have one more vote to take.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Hold a moment, por favor.
Oh!
We voted on the amendment, now we're going to vote on option B and reserves.
And $50,000.
And $50,000 for the cuts included in that.
I apologize.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
No.
Rosado? Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Aye.
Silvadi?
Wolf?
No.
No.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meister?
Malley?
No.
Okay. So by the same vote, I believe that's right, 8-6. Is that what we got?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
8-4.
8-4.
8-4.
I can't count, it's too late. Okay.
They're going to propose cuts.
And that's right.
Yes, they're going to propose and.
See, that's why we need to have a recording secretary here, and I shouldn't be doing that. And just, just for the record, so everybody knows, Keenan, Keenan Miller left at 8:53, so that's why he's not here voting. Okay. What? What it was on?
Aye.
You have who was yes and no's?
I, I wrote it down, if you want to get with me later, Mark. I don't have the individual who voted for what.
I did.
Okay, you do?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
I was trying to be a secretary.
Somebody keeping stats over here.
Excellent penmanship.
Do I think?
Yeah.
My pen, I thought my pen was going to die. Um, sorry, it was Uwer.
Uwer was yes, Saron was yes, McFadden was no, Rosado was yes, Beck was yes, Knop was yes, Salvati was yes, Wolf was no, O'Brien was no, Callahan was yes, Meitzler was yes, Malley was no. You're, you're welcome. Okay. Now you have direction from us. And then you can come up and tell us about the public hearing.
Yes, the public hearing is next Tuesday. It will start on or after 7 o'clock, and we will discuss the changes that you gave us direction for and present those as part of the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all our discussion tonight. And now we move on to project status.
Um, staff will be meeting with representatives of Main Street to discuss the tiny shops on Thursday evening at 6:30, so that project's moving forward. And then I think everything else brought up at the city council meeting last. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm going to.
No questions.
I just want to show really quick, since you brought it up, just what everybody's discussing.
Paper.
So this one, this one is currently the idea that's been put forward by Steve Vassilian, who drew it up over at the Art Stop. Still in flow, so we'll see what actually becomes of it, but this would be in the, it would be situated in the north line. There are concerns about, since we have the two handicap spaces right now, whether or not this actually meets grade and whether or not we would have handicap on that spot. Just have to wait and see.
Ooh.
These are the plans, not the exact color combination, so don't get hung up that it's not yellow.
Oh, I think it would really look really nice in yellow.
The basic design is going to be 12 by 12 with a front porch. The doors will swing out and probably pin out. This is still to be decided, too, whether or not there would be a boardwalk area. The reason for it, Steve explained that it would provide a flat level surfacing, since there is grade on that parking lot, that it is one way to address it. We'll see how it actually goes. And my favorite part about it, with Tony's contacts over in the building department, Steve put together all of the, kind of the, the trades department, the, um.
That's awesome.
The building plans.
That's awesome.
Very detailed specified, so depending on their level of experience or none, they can pick up and do a lot of learning, which is one of the best parts that I love about this.